Morning meeting in order. First item of businesses, I'll take a motion to go into work session. Motion by Randy. Second, thinking about Russ. Any discussions? Ain't none. I'm not sure your work session on the table to the information.
Okay, the next series, all item number three are just reports. And starting with the first meeting of this year, y'all agreed we'll hit any high points we need to, or just let the report stand at the end, you'll make one motion to accept those reports. In the full meeting, so the first is the minutes of the September board meeting. If you all want to take a, take a look and see, I don't have anything else with the gold iron that would, it would go on that one. We've been making the rounds in the capital the last couple of weeks, and I've got another couple set up next week and then the week after Chad and I both got, going to have some more. Just trying to see what all's going on, there's, there's a couple of red flag issues. And I hope you all can. Can think about about two days before one of our board members called us. To talk about this situation, we got word of this virtual program that's coming into a couple of Western Kentucky schools. Through K D E. They were concerned, their instructional people are kind of trying to figure out where it fits. I can tell you, it came up. At a lot of the discussions we have with our legislature, this is a situation. At one of our schools that may have anywhere from twelve to fourteen hundred. Virtual students that suddenly come under enrollment at their school. Through a cooperative agreement and it's going to take some legislative approval, apparently according to the chair. One of the education committees, so just wanted y'all to have it, the presentation that was made about KD virtual program, this is not the A eight. The thing that Marty did such a great job at the education committee talking about, this is an agreement with Dawson Springs. As well as potentially two other school districts. That will be transformational in terms of funding, which is why everybody's got a little bit of concern about it. Is it a manipulation of the funding? What's going on with this? And, and the fact that the primary concern appears to be that most of those students do not have to be residents of the state. That are enrolled in that program, which now ties back to our rules because there's a lot of concern about. You know, we, we don't have an in-state rule. Because so many of our schools have people, you got people go across your bridge. People in Pikeville do that, we have forty-eight counties that touch another state we've never had. We, we just say you have to be legally enrolled, which means the local district decides, well. I don't know what the exact measurement is, but from the state border to Dawson Springs is not a short trip. So it, it's, there's some things they're going to have to work out legislatively, but we just wanted them to make sure that we were aware if they needed anything, let us know. If we needed to amend any of our regulations to accommodate what they decide. There's concern. By the legislature on the education side because of its potential impact to funding. I believe it's a, the split that we heard was three percent, ninety-seven percent where ninety-seven percent of the funding is going to go to this third-party program and only three percent goes to the district. But then there's apparently some potential swapping of ADA money and or seat money, so you know, it, it gets kind of crazy. And I think that's why they're going to have to snip it. The other piece that. I would share with you and no decisions have been made, that's, that's for us to just kind of find out what they're going to do on the education side first. We also did a presentation that you'll want to look at, in particular, there's a couple of slides in that. Presentation, we were asked by Chair Deneen. Who had the budget subcommittee of interim education. So to do a presentation on the transfer timetable. Which didn't really add up. Because at first, because of its funding, that's what they're supposed to be talking about is funding, but as we talked to the chair. He was very candid that his committee has a subcommittee of education, had a number of people that did not know what we did. And we're typically hearing from constituents, this case took too long, this case was done this way, so he wanted us to go over the process. But it was a great opportunity, there was no hidden Mickey at all. Robert, if you'll scroll to the page that's got the caseload, that's the one that we really. Focused on with them, and this was as of October fifteenth. And I think this will, we've been telling you all this, but it will, this will surprise, I think even the, the, the ones that thought the sky was falling before. As of October fifteenth, we had five hundred and thirty-three in the office requests for eligibility compared to about seven fifty to eight hundred for the last two years. And that's October. They don't stop now, they continue on, you have forty, I think I looked at forty-two or forty-three. Sent between October fifteenth and October thirty. They just continue coming and that leads to the caseload, what we also want to show them is the due process works. More than sixty percent of those that come in here are rule eligible. Sixty-three percent. Last year or this year, I would argue that number would be higher if our. We didn't have such high turnover in A Ds that they sometimes don't provide all the information on the front end. It kind of skews to of our numbers. Because our appeals cases sometimes become eligible. Because of evidence that have we had in the first place, they wouldn't have had to go to appeal. So you kind of look at the additive of those two numbers, but it kind of gives you the stair step of the process. You know, we had sixty-four appeals at that point, that's not near, we're, we're, we're closing in on ninety now, believe. And you all have that printout in your, in your agenda, but. I mean, it's, it's rapid, but we wanted to show them that load and the other slide, if you'll scroll down, Rob. To, and this Chad, if you want to interject any here. I think there was some concern about the pace. By some of the brand new people who had never dealt with thirteen B. How slow things might go in their eyes. But when they saw this, I think it was eye opening.
Yeah, you know, one of the things we, we focused in on is that, you know, the legislature stepped in in, in the. I don't know if it was the late nineties or was it early two thousand and said that, you know, if you're going to give a hearing, you need to follow the administrative procedures act that, that the state follows, that's KRS chapter thirteen B, so. We do that, and so we thought it's important to lay out if we follow KRS chapter thirteen B to the letter. These cases would take. Six to nine months. To, to have, and obviously six to nine months in, in, in the eligibility of a student would make the appeal process completely pointless. And so we have identified areas where we can shorten the timeframe. For instance, hearing officers normally have, or yeah, hearing officer normally has ninety days. To issue his or her recommendation. We can, we can shorten that up if it's not the right of one of the parties that are litigating the case or a part of the case. We told our hearing officers ninety days isn't going to do. We don't, we want it as fast as possible, no more than thirty days. And quite frankly, our hearing officers are usually about ten to fourteen days is kind of looking the average for them. The heavier the load, the more complexities the case, the longer it will be. But they don't ever hardly get to thirty days, I can only think of, and I've literally done. Over a thousand of these, I can think of less than one hand where they did that. Near that thirty days, usually a lot of part of us. We also do things like you, you have an opportunity, every party has a right to twenty days notice of a given hearing. But we have a form that we have promulgated and we provide if they want to go forward and if all parties that ascending school, the receiving school and the family are okay to go forward. Will go forward in less than twenty days, assuming we have the ability to schedule the, the hearing that quickly, sometimes our load of cases. Isn't going to be favorable to that. But what ends up happening, instead of that six to nine months, we get things, you know, usually around thirty to fifty days is kind of. Where we're at from the time that we have everything going. And I think that was a very, very good soundbite in there because it shows that we are doing everything we can to accelerate the process. We understand the gravity of these things, we understand the importance. Quite frankly, we even prioritize within the year of right now. You know, I've got a track. Feel and a basketball feel, I'm going to put the track one a little bit on the back burner because basketball season's upon us. So obviously it's more important to get that basketball eligibility issue answered to be fair to the kids, to be fair to the schools, it's, you know, even if it is a no. We feel like it's unfair to give that to them timely, and I think you guys would agree. You know, we talked a little bit about how we went to the Zoom platform. Does that add numbers to this? I don't, I don't really think that it does, I do think it is a much more equitable thing, and I think it's a really powerful. Thing to, to say in court is that, you know, we, we are removing barriers. From these kids in, in terms of having access to the appeal process, I think that's a powerful statement. I think the reality is while we're seeing an increase is. Look, the legislation, I suppose, every, open a paper every year, people are talking about school choice mobility. Unfortunately, there's another side of that, thinking about your building. Parents don't have any patience to work through problems anymore. Do something that they don't like, they just take their ball, go home, figuratively handle it. And, and so, you know, people are not. Sticking around and working through issues quite the way they, they used to, as much as we'd like to control that, we, we can't. Our rules are, are there in place, so we, we're not putting this kind of together.
The, the other thing that came up in discussion quite a bit as we expected was the ability of homeschool students to participate. I can tell you that from, from the leaders that we've met with, you know, you, you never know how the entire aggregate body will vote. There's not a lot of interest in them participating without adding standards to homeschools. And that's where it usually breaks down. Is in general, homeschool students or the homeschool provider don't want rigid standards. But they want all the privileges, and that has been their testimony before. We've not had the first bit of feedback in multiple years from the homeschool association. They kind of, they don't want people messing it, but we do have a couple legislators that have indicated they might be proposing something that would add standards. And one member of leadership told me last week, he better be careful what he asks for because of the blowback you'll get from the homeschool people. You know, they're trying to, they, they, there's going to be a loud voice in the wilderness, no matter what you do. There'll be somebody wanting to be the exception. But at this point, there doesn't seem to be as much concern as there might have been a year ago. And certainly, we timed these visits deliberately, working with our, our firm. We did not go till the day after the election. And, and certainly that was a fork in the road. For at least, they believe twenty-four session priorities. That, that maybe some things around choice, et cetera, will be handled a little bit differently than they would have been had, had an election gone a different way.
We, we, yeah, we point blank had at least one person say. With the results last night. This is not a priority.
Yeah.
You know, because they realized they, they don't have the votes.
Of course, this was also the same legislator, at least two of you know, who. The first thing he said in conversation when I walked in his office was, when did you start awarding touchdowns on the five yard line? So he's at least keeping up with sports. And what was, what was the news worthy for that first weekend, but yeah, so I, I thought it was, he just broke the ice, I didn't have to. Those tie together with three, two, two, and then three, two, three, the status of regulation, Chad, you want to talk just a little bit about what went on with Todd and, and the promulgation?
Yeah, so our, our regulation is moving through the process, molasses is the word that comes to mind as, as I think about it. As we kind of got. Close to going before the administrative review subcommittee. There was some updates that we needed to add in terms of our, our sports medicine committee was the primary, I think that was the primary content, wasn't it? Is that?
Yeah.
We have worked with, yeah, we had worked with the Corey Stringer Institute, our sports medicine committee, and we had some updates to policies, including things like wet ball blow. And, and the processes that were following on that. None of them are controversial, none of them would have resulted in students being declared ineligible, and all they were going to do is protect kids and make them more safe. So in past practice, that's something that. Our, our contacts with KD were pretty comfortable with going on and making the changes and then going through ours. Unfortunately, in this case, they were not comfortable with that. And wanted to stick to the. Practice that they wanted to follow in this case, which was to send it back before. The Board of Education in Frankfurt and let them check off on that. As you would expect, that was compulsory and they had no issue with that, so that cost us another month. But we did go for the administrative review subcommittee last month, and as, as expected, nothing controversial and it was approved. That leaves us in a period where this regulation has now been received by the L R C and then forwarded to the education. Committee for review. They have ninety days to act on it. And if they do not act on it, the regulation automatically takes place. What we stand, what our standard practice is to be is the next education committee meeting. We would put it on the agenda. And if it's on the agenda and say, even if they don't call it and don't address it. The regulation would take effect at the adjournment of that committee meeting. And you can't make it up. Education does not plan on meeting in November or December this year. And so it may be January before their next committee meeting, and if they meet in January, because we are in the legislative session, it would have. In two committees. So we have to go through the House and we have to go through the Senate separately. We have, you know, because we were over last week and talked to some folks in leadership, there is a, a potential that they would schedule a. Education subcommittee or education committee meeting in the interim last month. And if so, we will work with leadership and hopefully put us on the agenda so we can have this process. Nothing's changed, everything's fine, everything's good, it's just an illustration of. Timelines and how hard it is and how long it is to get some of these things through those procedural frameworks.
We did talk to. I did find out the second day there that both chairs of education have made a request, leadership that they'd be allowed to hold a meeting in December. Because in the interim, you have two chairs with the House and Senate. And they've both requested to have a meeting, they've got another issue they want to talk about. And we would just be able to be on that agenda, but it's just not enough, we're waiting on leadership, it is a top-down controlled. Agenda. So we know that we're still, we're still in the queue where we need to be. But we, it was, we, we think it was a pretty successful couple of days, we're really just trying to make sure they're aware to, to. Lean on us if they get questions, there will be some additional modifications to what was House Bill three thirty-one last year. On the safety training, but it will be cleanest. That one of the things that the K M A docs are pushing and. In the ultimate irony, I think. It's likely possible that the less public stance KD, a K M A takes, the more likely this will be to be approved. Is to expand the trust fund that was set up for A Ds to also include some partial reimbursement of the wet ball blow devices. And basically make it, make it a pot of money that they can fund this year, they are in the process of making a budget request. In, in. Again, you can't make it up, division of the legislature, there was a provision in the House bill last year. That required K D E to do, as they've done, take an inventory of how many A Ds you own at a school, that was part of a report you filled out. They did not take an inventory of how many you need. So the difference between those two is obviously what they were looking for funding for, so they're going to have to try to derive need. They've asked us to kind of help on the athletic side, they've asked me to help on. If they've got this many sports, then maybe they need this many, but they've only got this and try to give them some number to shoot at. Of what could be funded, because they, they are, they do have a very healthy budget this year. And this would be one of those items that I think would get a lot of favor with helping fund it. Putting, but same time, they also mentioned, more than one mentioned that if we put this on there, nobody's going to be able to vote against it, so watch out for what's attached to it. So it, it, we're, we're into that process, as you all know how all that works a little bit, so. It's been a productive several weeks, we've been gathering information. The other thing we've been gathering information on that, that may or may not ever need to be discussed. Is the potential for cooperative teams, we've been talking to other states about what they do. For people to, multiple schools to combine and have one team. That's done a lot in the Midwest states where the schools are very far apart. You know, the Idahos, Montanans, or Dakotas, et cetera, not done a lot in the states around us. But would be one way of addressing if you didn't have enough participants, et cetera. The downside is that it might actually encourage you not to even offer something because your buddy school will. Sponsor it for you and where you fall play together. And we still have to, the, the one theme that we continue to talk about and we, we broached it from the homeschool side. And this has been the talking point with our superintendents for years and certainly with our association. Is when you talk about a, a person going to one school or sitting in one educational environment. But then playing for someone else, you've got to address the liability and insurance issue of whose are they when they're in the corner. Because things happen. And so that's why we have consistently said until the legislature amends their rules, you got to play where you're enrolled. They're going to have to give our schools some, some liability coverage and have to give obviously maybe some insurance coverage, so. We were consistent in that message, so that takes care of the item of three, two, two and three, two, three. And if it's okay, Mr. Chair, it leads us to the, the sports reports, and I would just ask staff, if you've got anything you need to highlight in your reports, that you've got a written report there for everything, but. Run ball. And go real field hockey.
Recently, the Sarah, the way to get stampede by the, we're in teams.
We will talk at some point, we had a. We had a single school inquiry. About the potential of hosting. The field hockey championship at a university. In Louisville. That has a pretty nice field hockey field, I would tell you, as I discussed with at least two of the board members this week. Our ticketed admission, issued tickets from the last three years would likely not fit in that facility or be close. The listed attendance of the, of the facility at Louisville was fifteen hundred. We had twelve fifty, I think it was, paid this year. Fourteen hundred a couple of years ago for a final, you know, you, you. You might try to fix one problem and create another if we're not careful and whether it's, whether it's Christian Academy or not, we have some facilities in the Louisville area that hold that championship. And frankly. Christian Academy's just been over backwards to accommodate that event, so. We'll let you know if anything comes to fruition, one of the things we have found from the university facilities. Is there is a tremendous cost difference. You all, when you see what some of the other universities are charging, some of you know that, because they're holding some of your events at universities. Will realize the deal, the good deal we've got at University of Kentucky, they're, they're, I guess they, they're so big, they can give some discounts to us, they might not give anybody else. Does happen. Football, we're going to cover a little bit later, Joe, back to you, golf, anything additional?
No, I mean, the first round seemed to go a little bit soon a few years ago, and we had an issue. Out in the west, we're initially going to put on. Participants were misidentified, figuring out who the team advances and who the others were. So that caused a lot of consternation and frustration by some of the coaches. But they did correct it before the playoff season, so we didn't have any. Qualified and didn't. Cars continue to be the greatest thing that people have learned about the coaches. Some of the good ones you have to live.
And as we found, you and Mr. Coop, and I've said in the, at the national level, carts are the number one topic of conversation. It bounced right around my card, even when it trained and you wrote it out. I will say this, as we are finally able to. Get back to some sense of routine and get these last few changes tweaked and finalize our competition rules, one of the things we're going to have to address as a staff. And have you look at as board policy is a window of time to correct things. It came up last week in one of our cheer regions, it came up there with the announcement, in fact, that's not binding. In some cases, on the officiating side, you have a window of correction. As we mentioned, the judgment playing football is the next play, a track meet with thirty minutes after the meet's over, there's defined windows, in some of these, we don't have those defined windows. And we probably need to hard code that to protect you all and that staff.
I do have to bring something up about to put you guys on the, on the, on a, on the golf side of it. It's been brought to my attention and, and even by the folks in Somerset at Blasky County. Talking about the golf situation, the cart situation, that's going to be a major issue next year with semi-state at, at Eagles Nest, and I don't think any of us ever even thought about. The, the, the travel at Eagles Nest. And how they're going to put kids, I was in, I was there two weeks ago with a group of seven and eight-year-olds. And we had seven-year-olds that couldn't even complete the front nine. Because of the up and down of, of that, I don't know how we're going to do that as far as transferring kids from. One to two and from. Three to four and then from five back up to seven. And then seven down eight, I mean, that first nine holes at Eagles Nest is brutal. So I mean, that's something we might want to consider even before that, I know we've already awarded it. I don't know what the process of that would be, but we probably ought to put that out so that they understand that there's going to have to be a cart situation that's, that they're going to have to address and. And I think they're willing, of course, I talked to Mickey Ray and I think they're willing to even go ahead and pre-rent some carts. I'm talking about passenger carts, not golf carts, but passenger carts to help move some kids around, but that might be something you put on your agenda a little early to get to before that pops up right up on us next year.
We didn't utilize some taxi service in the past, like that issue too, is when we used it at state.
Yeah. Yeah, it's getting to be a real.
Let's lean on Tucker, I think the issue, the issue that most of the discussion comes about is non-player transport, non-coach transport, just the public and, and. We found out one of the first years we were at Bowling Green Country Club, that we were utilizing every cart they owned. And there wasn't another source available for additional, and yet there's people that I guess through the regular season have been able to ride and do whatever they wanted to. But you write the competitors and coaches, that, there's a couple of tracks that are in which that, Coach Tucker's always been saying, what's, what can I do to help? They don't understand, Joe, that's good.
Might be just get you a little bit ahead of the game there, and then they're willing to do whatever, from what I understand, after talking. The pro down there, they're in Mickey Ray, they got it, pretty much owns the court, the properties, he, they're willing to do whatever they, they, they need to do, so.
Good. Yes, sir. Say one thing, went to the county. Semi-state, I guess, and they were talking about pin placements. Who has control of the pin placements up there, and that was brought up?
Supposed to be golf house concerned.
Okay.
They might have worked at the pro a little bit on that, I know that's brought up. Well, as well. It's two times, it shouldn't be as far.
That was here enough, Pitt County was.
I heard that feedback, I think that's every year, I think this will be really, that at the old times.
Okay, I mean, I, I didn't know who had.
It is golf house in conjunction with local forces. We, we definitely don't want this group. For me, it always do dead center on the. All right, Mr. Coop, anything special on basketball?
One note, after the report I submitted, Wolf County, one of our state first round sites. Said we, we provided that service for free, so they, they didn't want any of their workers and staff manager anybody paid for, so I'm, I'm sure that was.
Brock Scott bought huddle for his football association, he's doing, they're doing well. Good job. Way to go, Mr. Bill. We have, and in case you get any concerns, we, we have changed the way we're paying workers to get them expeditiously paid. But a lot of these first rounds, we're having trouble getting in a timely manner from them exactly. Who they are and, and what their rate is, and they're all, they're all using arbiter pay, as much as you know, so it's a, it's a paperless transaction. And some of them, like a certain athletic director that Matt may know, still haven't signed up. With arbiter pay despite multiple notices, so we want to give him some money, but he hasn't. So we're still terrified of us up on all of those. You want to cover the basketball rules?
They were about. The, the rules clinic.
Interpreter meeting.
Interpreter meeting, there were about thirty some odd states that were there over the rules changes. The resetting of the fouls was discussed a lot in the presentations on. Couple of how they're implementing the shot clock. And what they've got in place for lab training, et cetera, and then the commissioner did a presentation on. Sportmanship on that, that I. Had everybody think of it.
Twenty-six states with shot clock. If you're going to go with wrestling interpreter?
Yeah, it was the first time I was able to attend this meeting in person, the biggest value was talking to some of the states, they're implementing girls wrestling and. Some of the challenges they've gone through. Incorporated and they're selling in sports.
Anything else on your report for basketball?
No, anything about basketball. They have a website, if someone is still talking, if you don't know, most of your scoreboards. Nefco or less than that, they, they are programmable, you can go back in, we said with our new rule change, they have simple instructions.
One little two-step thing again. And Scott has offered to help notify Scott Chalk, her coaching head does some Nefco work as well. And has offered to help notify all of them, we put it originally, I think in the clinic, it's just a mention. But interestingly, some of the companies who sold the scoreboards did not know. But interestingly, some of the companies who sold the scoreboards did not know They could do that that easily. And they've developed their own one. My gosh, this is easy. I don't need to send somebody out in the field. Um, and, and we're finally getting people, as we mentioned in the spring, because I think, uh, Randy, it might've been you, one of the, one of the board members in the west first asked about that rule change. This was mandatory. And everybody kept talking about the elimination of the bonus, but nobody kept talking about the resetting of the fouls of the quarter. Which means there's less time you would have been shooting anyway. You combine those two, but everybody focused on the first one. And so it's been interesting now that, now that they're using it in scrimmages, it's been a ha moment that, oh, this isn't so bad. It may shave two or three minutes off the game. It's been interesting.
Julie, can I say something about Red in there? I know a river, Rob, I believe you talked about the Profit in field hockey being a little bit less and someone went because of absorption of the gold hand fees and the consumer seeing that. I know at least where we're at, because we still have a cash option that our district's requiring. You know, the consumer, we're trying to just always absorb the fee. You know, because we think that that helps the, uh, person, uh, that struggle with cash versus the golf and Ticket purchase to go in, just get the, uh, the golf and purchase. And we build in what we think we need in To that price, um, and sort of see a cash sale as a bonus. Okay, we're actually make more from the cash. Uh, because of these built in, I would suggest, um, and I know because I've been around a long time, but I also know there's a point where we went through the postseason. There's a little bit additional fee taken for the day to double A, right? And that for me, something sent out to the schools, just a reminder of the year, because we, I remember during regional volleyball, We did an eight dollar ticket or whatever. And I had to tell the regional managers, it's like, hey, we're not getting seven dollars off of this. We're going to probably get six fifty. Because we need an extra fifty cents probably at one. Um, and they would send a reminder out right before each postseason that, hey, if you go, if you decide to absorb Or regardless, the golfing fee is going to go up a small.
Yeah. And that, that twenty, it's twenty cents, but that still, that obviously could change the fee. And we've, we've tried to do that, but re-messaging is not a problem at all.
Well, I think on our end where we decide, it's one thing if you're just going to let the customer eat the fee regardless of what it is. But in ours area, and I don't know how it is across the state, we're trying to always absorb the fee if that's possible.
Yeah, that's what, and that's what we're doing. But some of our schools are, you're right. So it's a good reminder because you know, if you think about it, if that dollar ten fee, uh, and you're charging seven bucks, just went to eight, you're only at ten cents. And that's exactly the decision we made a year ago too. It just, people that buy three eight dollar tickets and see a twenty-seven dollar charge On their credit card begin questioning versus eight, 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 eight. Now, we still also have some people, frankly, and this is the other part of that messaging. Is, uh, they undervalue their product with some three dollar football ticket. Uh, based on our financial reports. And at some point, you gotta pay bills. And the, the schools get a hundred percent of the postseason until the state tournament. The only money we make is in the finals. Other than that little bitty golf and fee that helps pay for our development. But we need to remind them that they, they think Not under value their product too. Cause I saw your report from last week. It was obviously a nice week. But it's, it's not, it's not the state average either. It's that, it's good.
And that, I got a curiosity, what happens in a cage where two schools can't bring on the ticket prices to say, as this group stepped in to say, This is.
We would, and we're generally going to go between them. I've had to do that a couple of times this year.
We went and played a game where there was this year and it was at where the ticket price was five dollars.
Yeah.
The varsity football game after so long, now you're paying bills.
How you paying the referee?
For five dollars.
Especially postseason, if you're gonna, if you're gonna charge four or five bucks and, and you've got seven referees, Which I know some of you probably think five too many, but at the same time, you know, you, you've got to pay bills and it's, it's really the only time. It's the, if you think about it, and this is what Jim Watson should say every, every year, it's the only non-budgeted revenue you get. Cause nobody counts on making money. So just hurts it under value. We, we do discreetly, we have a cash option at every event, but we're not going to turn away papal. It doesn't have, It doesn't have any way to get in, but we have found that papal that may not be able to use the app Has got, that's probably what bought dinner and gas. So our decision a couple of years ago that Rob pushed us on to go to the point of sale at all the events has just about cut down. Points and some of the facilities we use, nobody's going to bat an eye. Our football ticket price goes up two dollars this year. That's because we're absorbing The fees instead of the customer getting. But we're, and we're actually not betting, I don't think for much. But it's strategy. That's great.
I don't know if anybody else in here is aware of it or using it, but the golf and concession option is going to be.
It's a bomb.
A really good thing. We've done it. We're going to have our football season. It's, it's good.
And they will, they will, they're still loaning equipment. They are, they'll do your inventory control. They'll tell you how many you sold, whatever item. I mean, it is, It takes away the pilfer factor because you know what you put in. It's, it's quite a bit different and, and generally There's not too many people that leave without the ability to use a card. Now they may not have the ability to use the app and everybody gets that. They sure can slide a card.
I'll say this.
Talking about admission and different schools, because it comes up on policy board meetings all the time. We have some schools that don't want to go past the five dollars because they don't want to go get ones at the bank. And, uh, generally it's harder because the official figures are going up there and you're administrated, whatever you guys do, you know, people are working. Uh, people that were not, and I agree with Julie, you're undervaluing your product. And some areas just don't, it puts a lot of pressure on those that want to raise the ticket prices. And you've got a, a school district right in that store. And if you want to go to seven, then they're all standing five, it takes a tough. And, uh.
That's the beauty of, of digital ticketing is your price doesn't matter. But the change was the problem, but you, but what you find is if you're insistent on keeping cash, Then you're, you're setting some of those parameters up. Cause I know from all those years of having to get a change fund. You know, taking forty grand in a briefcase to the football playoffs. So we'd have a change fund at Western. It's a challenge to try to get it, to get it right. And then you've got to secure it and you've got to have the right, you've got to generally pay more security. We've been able to reduce by one person, most of our events is because we might have somebody guarding the cash. Makes a difference. But great points, Dave, and, and great. Appreciate that. Um. That takes us three point four. Update on the fifteenth region?
Yes.
Okay. And I say this because there's at least two of you in here from a region, near a region or representing a region that might want to look at this. Um, and, and I'm going to talk about soccer, even though soccer just left. Um, but our fifteenth region this year. Now, they're still leading the world in disqualification. The fifteenth region came to you with a request and for, uh, Ms. Mandy and others that weren't here for that, they got a request to use an alternative regional tournament format. But they got approved on a request. So they did not play districts. They, uh, they had six boys. Soccer teams and nine girls. I think that's right. Brackets are in there. So if that's backwards, I apologize, but They, they put everybody into a region and they use the two weeks to play the tournament. Which is a perfect option if you only have eight in your region. And you're arguing about which five and three and which four, you have an option. We might have another region in the state that has that possibility. But certainly if your numbers get down that low, there's a different way to do it. They did, they reported nothing but positives. It required a little bit of expense on our part to redevelop some of our bracketing. But it wasn't a couple of hours billing. So, but it seemed to quieten them. Uh, you also approved the basketball experiment we're talking about in January. It's not been so easy to implement, but, but the soccer, we told you we'd report it. You've got word of what their, what their criteria was. So it's an alternative for those that perhaps only have two districts and those aren't necessarily full. Um. Maybe the sport expansion isn't going to happen. So let's play the format different. Cause I know, I know in the first region, there's, there's always consternation about there's five and one and three and another, how are we going to balance? And we're getting down to the micro mile, which one ought to move and maybe it was a better format. Um. Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. I would ask staff three point five, anything you want to highlight on the non-championship reports? NSLS, you want to tell them what's going on?
Yeah, I think we shared with you, the National Federation was going to cut back on the number of students that were going to go to the national conference by like Seventy kids, from one sixty-eight to down to about ninety. Um, and after feedback from some of the states, and, and I think we were one of them. Um, they went back to the normal numbers, um, and found another hotel and, and now we're going to be able to take four In any above the four, we would pay for the lodging, we'll still pay for the meals and everything. So I think we're going to look at twelve for this mission.
What you all, they have been, and if you haven't been to the student conference, you really ought to make time to go. But the group that they take up there comes back and serves as the facilitators For the state and makes it not an adult to kid, top down thing, but a kid to kid In a lot of different things. And so it's a key part for us. We, our sponsorship of Musco Lighting, uh, covers the first part of that. And then there's a residual that we get at the end of the year from them. We'll make sure that it's budget friendly, uh, on us. We won't deprive another, uh, function because of that. But I know that a couple of you have had kids in that program. Uh, it's a, it's, It can change somebody. It can make them feel different. Do you agree with that, Russ?
It's phenomenal.
Yeah.
They make connections and, uh, They keep it weekly. They're contacting each other. Especially most of South Asian Kentucky community in Louisville and, um, Lessons were built and confidence of the open notes. It, it's fantastic.
Clearly, to use an old family expression, some of those people when they met wouldn't, wouldn't know how to say stuff if they had a mouthful of it. And they opened up, they became totally different people and maybe that helped back in your buildings. But we are, the point we're making is we are not going to reduce our commitment to that program, even if the federation does. We'll supplement to make sure our kids don't suffer from that. We'll keep it till one van worth, but we certainly will go above all. Um, Ms. Braden, I think you had a report on state board.
Yeah, um, on behalf of Special Olympics Kentucky, they wanted to express their gratitude for the support of the PHSA and the border control and unified sports. Um, I did attend the Kentucky Board of Education meeting where they presented to the board subcommittee about Um, unified champion schools and they had student voices there just kind of from our two national banner champion schools in our state. Um, just kind of sharing their experiences with unified sports. And it was Really great to listen to, you know, the impact that it had on, on different kids. So. Um, and I think my other report on there, I'm also finished up my term on the NFHS middle spring committee, um, in October. That was my last year. I've been on that for four years now. Um, the middle school committee's focus continues to be providing resources for middle level Sports across the, the nation. We only have two states who currently have a middle school association. Um, as far as member schools and kind of doing what we're doing. Um, so otherwise the committee's focus has been just trying to provide different resources. We've actually created different, um, NFHS learn courses, which are targeted more at the middle school level and dealing with different Things at the middle level that, that maybe it's a little bit different than some of the high school level schools. So Kind of where the committee, um, where I left it for section two.
Cope, you have a couple of items given with officials meetings.
Yeah, I attended the Midwest, uh, official summit in Des Moines, about ten states there. Um, various topics we went over. It's always good to, to share. Recruiting retention and junior officials, just about every state is jumping on that program. Um, and then ref reps as well too. So, um, I know Mr. Dan will be indoctrinated into that group, but Um, it's just awards recognition, anything and everything officiated.
Appreciate it by stealing that idea. Um. All the, the staff did, other than a last minute illness where one could not attend, the staff attended the section two meeting in Pittsburgh. And, uh, again, that's a, that's one of the two opportunities during the year that our staff gets professional development. It's related to exactly what they do. So it was a really good meeting, a brief two days and a long, a lot of hours in the car with me. Um, real great title known workshop.
We, we would normally conduct work, pick two, uh, member schools out of the state to go and conduct our, our title and workshops. And we, we target those towards schools that are on the list for, for revisit slash audit for, for the school year. Um, geographically, the way the, um, Schools were picked fell this year, we thought it'd be more feasible to, um, rather than try and find the locations. Um, to just conduct the webinar from, from our office, you know, so Mr. Tack, Captain myself, along with our auditors, to book those to be a webinar on the twenty-fourth by October twenty-sixth. Um, I think, um, we were pretty pleased with the way it went. Cause you know, obviously the event creator didn't have to travel. So we didn't have to travel. Um, I think we still were able to disseminate the information, have this conversation and address all the needs. Yeah, through webinar versus actually going out to the member schools. Um, uh, you know, the commissioner, as we had a lead to that earlier in the year that, um, This may be the option based on where the schools were to be revisited and just made it a lot more beneficial for everybody. I think it might be something to look forward. Be more so than the travel. So.
Matter of fact, tomorrow morning.
Yeah, I guess that's a good segue. It's not in a report, but we do have the middle school administrators where we will discuss. And we are going to do that webinar after request from a couple of schools. Um, just where commissioner and I will go through what's in the middle school regulation and what they should be monitoring as far as coaches education and what's in that law. Um, for our middle school administrator.
Um. Item three, six is a, um, an item that's in your all's agenda. Uh, the appeal experience status report. If you approve these reports, that's just where it is now. You will notice Mr. Collins has made this comment to you once before, but we have focused on prioritizing the fall sport cases early. So we'll see those earlier and then the basketball and the winter sport backlog is now starting to clear. That's the worst that was, that prioritization was intentional.
Can I ask a question about transfer, um, procedure, Mr. Collins?
Yes, sir.
Uh, so I know there's a letter that comes out for statute, right? It's sent at the very end of conclusions, rulings and so on and so forth. Is, is there an ability to send An email as well as it just have to be sent by mail?
So the, so the, are you talking about the final order?
Final.
The final order is sent by email.
Right.
Okay. But does that come? It's, so I guess second question is, is there ability to at least send it to the designated representatives right now that only goes to the principal?
No, the final order goes to everybody.
But the mailing goes just to the principal's office?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's correct. I'll have to verify.
A hard copy, but the email goes to both.
Okay. And, and, and quite frankly, we're in the midst of actually increasing our communication on that, you know, we, we are given, KRS chapter thirteen B has a very Antiquated, uh, modes of communication. You have to send it by, uh, US certified mail return receipt requested. And, uh, I, I'm telling you right now, that does not make it faster. It makes it slower and I am shocked how often it gets lost in the mail. Uh, and it's not effective until it's actually received. So if it gets lost in the mail, technically we have an issue.
So is it effective when the emails receivers?
Not, not legally.
Well, the certified letter.
Yeah, the certified letter is, was now, you know, it, it, no one's going to take issue obviously with, with that under no, normal circumstances. But what we have determined is as we've continued to look at this process and try to figure out how to, How to improve the communication, how to keep it in, in, in tune inside the building. Um, I think you're going to see increased emails to not only the principal, who we are obligated to prioritize under the, under the framework, but Um, we're going to copy the ADs of the designated reps, just so We understand the reality is that that letter comes in the mail and it sits on the principal's desk and it might get, you know, opened, it might not, it might get forwarded to you, it might not. Uh, so that, that's simple, uh, increasing the, uh, email usage, while it's not legally effective. It keeps you in the communication loop, which I think is really what your, your source of, uh, concern is.
And as I further pointed at that, because that was part of meetings last week in the Capitol. As we promulgate our due process procedure. Our due process procedure is published approved amendments to thirteen B. And we have been encouraged by someone who's in leadership on the regulations committee to include that communication piece. Where perhaps an email would be okay, but we have to, that would have to go through the year long process.
Yeah, that, that, that whole statute, um.
Needs, needs updated.
Needs to be. The commissioner likes, likes to say, you know, it's not nineteen eighty, uh, five anymore. Um, they need to be living that, uh, as well. Cause I mean, it's, It's thirty years out of date.
That's common. I mean, it's, it's already, we had, we had an automobile issue last week with, with financial institutions. I mean, the, the loss of FedEx and UPS and federal mail stuff has gotten to the point that that's coming. It's, it's going to happen probably this session.
Cause she, cause the good thing is on the backside, as People know a lot more about technology than I do in the room. We'll just, you can, you can prove things. Got there and got where you got trails you can find. So that's a whole lot better than what we're getting right now. I don't know. Everything we're processing now is now, every, every bit of mail that comes out of Lexington now, it's been last couple of years, goes to Louisville to be processed and then back out in state. So we know we're adding two days to everything.
Yeah. So if you're sending something to Winchester.
Louisville and then. Yeah. Back. It's a little bit like, a few weeks ago, I flew to Detroit through Charlotte, you know, like not a direct route. It's kind of a mail. It's a little bit like a few weeks ago, I flew to Detroit through Charlotte, you know, like not a direct route. It's kind of a mail. Um. That that is the transferring eligibility appeal report. Uh, through seven is the final eleven financial aid. Any highlight you want to make?
The memo is really just the schedule of how it'll go out this year, which is, you know, we'll start right after first week or whenever I get back from Christmas in the building and send the link.
And and we replaced through some work that Sarah done, replaced that one that's labeled VOC report with a more readable document. We'll replace that at the break and you'll see it's same data. But it's just five columns. And basically we have been asked by a couple of board members to look at who all people are using for testing and for financial aid tests. And it's just information for you, not minded on anything you're going to do. Uh, Mr. Angoli, anything on the report on three eight?
Uh, no, the update there from Bowling Green just updates their status, read upon components of the orders. Uh, prior training they've done as well as additional training. Uh, they've also got NFHS certification for their veteran fall coaches. Uh, the one thing that we have to use still is select random students to verify their residency. Uh, so I'll execute that during its program.
We do a couple thousand of those.
Couple thousand, everyone, every single.
I apologize, Bowling Green and the board. I'm sorry.
Our next two reports deal with the official supervision and uh I think that. Mr. Coke and Mr. Bottoms are probably tag team this first one and I may interject or staff may interject as needed, but. You all want to look at those attachments. Is there anything you want to highlight in these reports?
Well, I think it's just. Don't be deceived by the officials' numbers, you know, where we've got about the same that we had last year because of the new officials that are coming in the fold. That aren't the seasoned veterans that might be getting assigned games on that. So um while we are. Pretty much where we were last year on officials, I think that's a key point, keeping them.
I would agree.
That that's something that we have looked at and we put in the rationale. If you look at that, we've got. Our basketball numbers are close to last year, but more than 10% of them. So we're really not on par with last year. We're down 10%. Uh, of those people that were registered last year. So we're we're already and we have a, we have talked about this and threatened this with our coaches for probably 12 years. But we have a sport that, in my opinion, picked a really bad year to expand opportunities, given its number of officials. Let's rest. We, they've done everything they can. From their circles, we put out stuff all we can. The environment that there have been subdued to the last few years or last many years has just made it where nobody wants to do it. Uh, you walk into a wrestling match most of the time and I I look at Marty because he's been to a bunch of them. Um, you go in there and it is chaos around the mat. I mean, everybody's around there and everybody's squalling and nobody's in the stands and they expect a nineteen year old to handle that. Like a seasoned veteran and it's just, we've got to, we've got to convince them to control the environment or we're not going to have it. But they're already canceling stuff. Uh, for that first weekend, they're already telling schools, don't move it to this day because we don't have any. It's challenging. Anything else that you want to point out about the disqualifications, maybe the report by sport? No, I won't. I won't bring that up again. Mr. Collins knows he's leading. Um. But there there is a list of the disqualifications and we'll keep you up to date with that. Scott will do those reports from here on out. And then we continue to sponsor the NASO summer summit. Uh, forty, I think forty associations don't sponsor that. Uh, Mr. Coke, uh, you or Mr. Uh, Bottoms want to talk a little bit about ref reps and just. Now that we had the first call, I think everybody was a little shocked how much enthusiasm our school had.
Yeah, we had um the first webinar was Monday. We've got another one that that's coming Monday. Between the two, forty two schools now have expressed interest in starting officiating classes. Or at least want more information on it. Um, and and that program I think is going to take off. Um, in regard to providing that brick turnkey operation. We also. The cost that is involved with that. We do not benefit from any of that. That's just directly a a a ref rep's cost for the the uh access to the software. We do get a hundred seat licenses. A year and we're going to use that toward our junior program and let those uh individuals have access to to that. So.
He doesn't know where the coffee pot is and he's starting to learn, never get to do it.
I I think he did learn though over the last three weeks about processing VQs and how.
Is it exactly what you expected?
No, sir.
All right. Um. The last few items are related to finance I can go through, but there's not a lot of decision points for you, but I want to point out the one that is. The first is three ten one. We're blessed to have McQueen of TPG with us. And Ms. Hacker has her uh sport uh report. You see it's in the board. Uh, document. Is there anything else you would like to add? And we can have staff give you a seat. Mr. Lincoln will be glad to give you his seat.
Thank you for calling me queen. No, I mean, everything in the report's pretty up to date. It is. It is exciting to be at ninety one percent and with verbals, we're at ninety six percent. So. Um, last year came down to the wire for our property to hit goal and. This year we've positioned ourselves. I don't know if that's my sanity or because I feel it. But I am happy that we should be there before the New Year's. Um, so that's exciting. And something else that I uh found out this week too, the property of Kentucky, out of all the. TPG properties, we are sitting at third right now and the two above us are the NFHS, which we represent them too. TPG does and then also Ohio. So that's pretty um big as we're being third in revenue right now. So. Very exciting stuff with that. Um. You'll see a lot of new faces coming up in a couple of weeks. As for partners, sponsors. We're really excited about that. Um. Even more excited to roll out what we'll have for the Sweet Sixteen for both events. We did um get a big renewal, so that's exciting to see that um. Um, come in and will continue to be our title for the girls tournament. Um. So yes. It's been good. It's been a good fall. And thank you, sir, for calling me queen.
We need to increase the day about four hours so she can have a more time. I don't think.
You know, it's funny. I've said that a couple of times this week. I wish there was more time in the day.
It's not that she doesn't have the energy for four hours. I think she's got hours going to do it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Um, the financial report documents that uh you all ask for each month, the checks are part of that as well as the general ledger. I point you on the general ledger. If you look down in the uh in the. Thanks to twenty thousand numbers. There is a reserve for physical plant and that's what we're going to talk about that in just a second. There's some money that was set aside for the newer board members. Um, we do not, we operate at the end of the year. In in certain categories like around the building fund and. That if we haven't spent it, we reserve it for later. We don't get a use or lose mentality norm. Where you've got this much and you've got to spend it by June thirtieth. That allows us to build up a big reserve in some of these. So we've got, you know, almost a hundred thousand dollars. We're right at a hundred thousand dollars in physical plant stuff. And so. We're able to handle emergencies, which is real good. Uh, but that financial report is three ten two, three ten three. Mr. Coke, you want to remind them, we talked about that week. In July, but because of various conflicts with the board and the staff. The the meeting date has been contracted for next summer's meeting and it is that week, but it's later.
Yeah, it's the same week, still in at a loft because it's uh July the thirty first through August the second. That's a Wednesday through Friday. So we would come in Wednesday and. There is irrelevant baseball being played that night up there um that we could go to and then. Meet all day the next day and then Friday.
And and uh brothers Will Hoyt and Demler and and Sister Harold will coordinate golf and we'll we'll probably have an opportunity for recreation for some of you here on summer break.
And the relevant baseball does include the little brown bears team.
Oh, interesting. The uh, thank you, Bush. Yeah, a couple of things that you're going to see announced and we have meetings scheduled with the schools. We we told you before about Advance and Ultimus. They are two NIL education companies. Uh, they do not provide NIL services. They do not provide lawyers. They don't hook you up with a a sponsor. They provide education for parents about what the NIL law states and then what is state specific. And we're going to be the twenty sixth state, I believe it is, that's going to use them. The bottom line is they're going to have an app. That kids can get, parents can get. It can guide them through questions, help them find where this rule is if they have this. Make sure the wrong person doesn't at the wrong time make an announcement. They're giving away a car. And then they got to turn around and retract it. Uh, you know, things like that that can happen. So it's timely that 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 announcement's going out and you've got the material on it. They're they're. They're not getting money for for services for NIL. Anything that they get is just for the product they provide and we get nothing out of it. It's not, we just need, we just think it's badly needed. Um, and then a couple of general reports. Um. Member school issues. We kind of leave this open. I don't think, Mr. Braden, you've had anything, but perhaps David School and a little bit of an update.
Oh, no.
But we're still working on their accreditation. There's a couple of candidacy numbers that we're working on and we still have the pending consolidation. Uh, of the two Christian County High Schools. Uh, we'll we'll know in December when they take their final action about what year. We certainly think they're going to continue as as multiple schools for at least any year. Uh, but we'll, we'll see what goes on after that. Uh, but we don't have anything else new. Then uh you'll notice the around the state and nation is a little thin. Um, we're re- we're redesigning the way we give that information to you. To where we can give it to you in a web portal and you go look at the subject and see the articles and not have it all tagged. So I think it'll be an easier way. So you should get that. But then there is a draft that is not attached. It should be attached. For those of you uh who are going to, who are eligible to go to the summer meeting. Um, in Boston, which is our second year going to Charlotte plus our offices. I've already heard from one of you that that's your year that you're going to define uh simply because you already have plans for that last week of June. So we'll uh we'll get with you. We need to really solidify those plans by the January meeting and then they come out with an imperial in uh. In February, we're ready to go. Twenty six through second.
Twenty seven.
Twenty eight, yeah, twenty seventh to twenty eighth through second. June to July. Now, this is, I believe, the last year. That it's on those dates. It's going to back up a couple of days to where it ends before June thirtieth. And that was a request that part of the feedback on people that didn't want to have to travel on the Fourth of July and some of the states wanted to get it in the prior years, physically your budget. By being dumb at the travel by the thirtieth. So. It's going to move a couple of days on future contracts. Those that those future dates are in the board committee list document that's online. So if you ever want to look and see what your year is, and we got a couple of situations where people came in to finish terms. So. You may not be in your first, but you may be in your third. You got to kind of look at that list, see where it goes. So those are. That is the reports I, so Mr. Cold Iron, at some point you'll want to. I would think unless there's something you want to pull, you want to get a uh. Push him forward to a full meeting, let him handle the motion. There's no objection.
Any objection, you'll push forward to regular meeting. No objection, we move it forward to regular meeting. Uh, four. Also, as soon as possible, act later, man.
Just some, just discussion. Um, we're just trying to see if any of you have had feedback because we had scheduled to have in January. The overlay of what lacrosse and boys volleyball are going to look like. Uh. A year and a half later, people are realizing that's going to happen and we're starting to get a little more feedback about. Why in the world are we adding something to the spring? Because our baseball field. And helping what you voted. But we've been looking and trying to get parameters together. The the it's pretty, seems pretty seamless. To lay boys volleyball right over the top of the spring calendar. The three soccer organizations that have been holding championship and regular season play do not utilize the same calendar among themselves. Much less a statewide calendar. The initial feedback we've gotten was a little hesitation about having a one spring sport start while the winters are still going on. But I think right now that the the Louisville area is playing the first of March. That's the schedule we got. Somebody else got it.
Come out lacrosse, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that is still in some case, some years, basketball districts. Um, that's really going to be the discussion point we're going to have with you all. We, our initial thing we reported to you is we would lay it right over the spring sports. The thing is lacrosse participation is small enough where it doesn't need district regions and state yet. It could probably just be some form of region and state. So it doesn't need the extra time. It could probably overlap. It's an outdoor sport. So I'm not sure how much lacrosse you can play the first of March, but that's really going to be your decision point. Where we place it. So we'll get the parameters of those three groups. We'll share them with you all. Try to see, but somebody's going to have to change. They can't all keep their existing when they don't all have the same one now. Those Northern Kentucky group has their schedule. Louisville has theirs, the Lexington area has theirs. And I think Bowling Green plays by the Louisville schedule. Which is, I think, their outlier in terms of the oddity.
I know on the girl side that the Northern Kentucky teams have asked to join. And this is our approach to play. Be ready for season. So maybe they don't plan.
Exactly. Exactly. I knew the discussions were going on. We hadn't heard the results. So if they, if they do that, because I know that one of the. Kind of structural tenants of the season has been to stay away from the Derby weekend. But they've gone some years the week after and some years the week before and. The more they can do congruently, the easier it's going to be for you all to plug it a lot. Without, you know, a whole bunch of resistance. I remember the year we added team tennis. And we tried to mandate seating and everything and it was the the Jefferson County area that good tomatoes came at everybody. And we, so we're trying to get as much information as we can before we bring something through. Um. But right now, the only thing is that you all direct us to bring, the only recommendation would be is a voting item you. Um, would direct us to bring you back up to the car zone and let you all approve. We're not approving in January. It's still a year out. So that's, we're pushed to the regular meeting from your role. Unless somebody's got an objection.
Anybody got an objection on that and we forward? They know without out and forward.
We had a member, we had two members asked, uh, again, this comes up every couple of years and because of the turnover in board, I want to remind you. The sport activities. Uh, archery, bass fishing, bowling, cheerleading or competitive cheer, dance and esports do not have a limit of seasons. They only have a start date. And then we sponsor the postseason. That's it. That was purposeful from a historical perspective. We used to just have one sport activity. It was competitive cheer. And while federal regulations said it couldn't be a sport. The board at that time didn't want it to be a sport because they tried that for about a year and it subjected cheerleaders to the transfer rule. That may not have been the most well-received decision the board ever made. So they came back and asked us to come up, what's something else? So we came up with the idea of a sport activity. And all of these now fit in. The sports, by the wording of ball six, sports are impacted by the transfer rule. So. When we look at discussion on this, I think there's, right now, we only do of the five elements that are consistent in all the sports. The only one we do right now is the start of practice and that's just to define something for insurance. And in reality, as Mr. Collins and I uh have, he's had the negative of riding with me when I've talked about this a dozen times. We define the start of the season for the purpose of insurance, but we don't cover anything until the regional tournament. So why are we even defining start? I think it was a design to try to help our ADs schedule. First year, we added an activity of our fall was bowling. And we did a full, you have this many matches and you have this much season and our ADs got madder than heck because they felt like that made them have to have that. It forced them to spend the money on lanes and buy buy shoes and all this. So. You know, it it's just. I told board member, two board members, I said, we'll throw it on there. If there's any interest. If we're ever going to do it, we would need to do it. It would need to be final by May or a proposal final by May. So you've got time. Tell the board members, please put it on, if there's any thought.
You know how I feel about archery. Being the longest season in the entire year. But um. I thought there was talk at one of the last meeting or two about esports, whether that continued to be two seasons or we just narrow it down to one season or is that part of this discussion, I guess?
Yeah, we 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 still get a lot of input from the coaches and admins that it's, you know, two seasons is tough. So.
My coach, it's. Too much.
But.
But that's just one school.
Yeah, and it's uh we hear fatigue for the players and the coaches. So.
Well, interestingly enough. And they're not going to watch this meeting. The announcement that was made yesterday. Was likely the reason why they wanted two seasons. Original. It was, can we, can we help our expenses by having two seasons for the students to pay? Let's face it, it was, it was financial. Now that they have waived the financial revenue. I wonder how important that will really be. But that's just a strategic discussion that we continue to have. Rob brings it up every time that we're on a call with them. He brings up, that's the feedback we get. It's a long season. Archery, you kind of have to put an asterisk beside it. And we've said this before, when we did the. Archery, you kind of have to put an asterisk beside it, and we've said this before, when we did the blue ribbon review in late nineties, the State Department of Education wanted us to take over bands. And the argument was what's curricular? What's co and what's extra stay out of the band? So we got that put away. It's kind of where we are with archery. It's so ingrained in the curriculum in some areas with the mass program itself. So that's, but you're right, that's been a constant source of discussion, but the esports is, is the biggest burden we probably place, would you, I mean, all of you, is there any, any longer commitment? To a single sport or activity than, than esports starts in basically August signups and then finishes in April?
Yeah.
You know, I, I, back to what you were saying about match, I, I don't know if match limits is really at my level of concern as much as the timeframe of the sports season. The match limits for a sport activity, some schools cheer and dance may do ten competitions and some may just narrow down to do three or four. Think the timeframe is the concern for us in archery, uh, which is technically a spring. It's sport, even though we're having an invitation on December. And also, you know, the next potential conflict will be the volleyball, archery, use of gym along with how many other schools are using, uh, their teams for testing. I call our gym the testing center in spring. Because of all the testing we're starting to do in our gymnasiums. Uh, at that time of the year, so there's a balance for sure.
Well, I mean, that's item three as far as a date for contests would at least constrain a season. If you have that, um, and you just. You've got six of, I think we're, if I count right, we've got six board members that are actively serving in some form of AD role. Maybe we can get some data and, and talk to our two, four or five big district ADs. They've, they've got feedback, what that might best look like. It's not the best for them, but the best for.
The other part of that is, even though I just sat there and talked about how crowded the gym is in the spring, it's more crowded now. Uh, with basketball and dance. And three levels of boys and maybe two or three levels of girls and trying to figure out when can I drop archery in on our gym's calendar, uh, in the, in the winter. Getting in the gym right now, it's starting. And that's, that's a, that's a challenge for archery as well.
Is there sentiment to try to at least gather data and see if we can come up with that? That gives us a little bit of direction because we can, we can get a group together by webinar or something and try to just figure out.
I, I had a couple of calls too about the bass fishing, start time and stuff. Are, are we missing some tournaments possibly by not letting them start at a certain time or?
They don't, and unless they compete as a school.
But that's what I'm saying, they can't really compete in the school or start the season. I mean, start the school, right? They have to wait. Are we missing some? I, I mean, I don't know.
Let's look at all six of them. Let's look at all of them. Because I think that, um, a lot of that gets back to, you know, it's some of these out of season things. It's okay. Let's talk about April basketball. Which goes on at a whole lot of places. And the, the open gyms and some of the competition where they said they changed what shirt they're wearing and it's the same group together. And are, are they just not knowledgeable about how that could work? I don't know. But we, let's, let's, that's, that's good for the AD heads to deal with this every second. But I guess it's seven, if I didn't count in. That's a good percentage of the board.
One other thing, while we're talking about cheer and dance, is there any allowance to, this is small stuff. But for triple threat awards, I know the chair and dance are seen as rare sports.
Competitive cheer, yeah.
I don't even know my chair and dance, people tell you they've been at every game in the whole entire fall. We've had a couple of students who just missed out on the triple threat award, uh, that cheered in the fall or danced in the fall. And I had a girl bowl, went to play softball. And she didn't qualify because she cheered technically, wasn't like a sport.
Yeah, that's the difference. That's the technical difference between sideline cheer and competitive cheer. I mean, it, it gets down to that and. And it is, the one thing about those type of programs is they've, they've got to be very rigidly based so they can be automated. You know, like, because we've talked about letting ADs just select, and there's ADs that would select a triple threat that only play one season. Those are offense, defense, special team. That goes down.
Well, I think of those two sports, we're pretty close to them. In some way, if you could argue, they're closer in day range to being a fall sport than they are a winter sport.
I, I think it'd be interesting if you looked at the last list, how many people would miss out on the triple threat if they couldn't count this winner.
So it.
It could go both ways.
We kind of looked at that here right after COVID.
Could we not just suggest the triple threat criteria? I mean, it.
Yeah, but that's what we're talking about. You, you would penalize one to help another. At some point.
Cause you could have a girl who played basketball. Or, you know, in the fall, if, if you, if she was getting a triple threat as a winner and we move it for a fall, she's going to be the one who does it.
Right, you're going to lose something.
The one thing about cheer and dance too is. Cheer and dance is kind of weird. We're not really at the end of their season. Our championship, we're kind of. In the middle, uh, maybe, maybe a lot more towards the beginning. Um, cause nationals aren't even till February. Now, we understand we're dealing with schools that not everybody goes to national. We understand our championship is the end for a lot of school. It's also kind of the beginning for a lot.
I think the decision point, the decision point would be, and you have to look at the impact, you, it's either or. So, and if there, if you've got the fall that's already got six offerings. And this, spring is now going to have seven and the winner only having three or four, are you really, how many would you lose in four? I think it'd be more than you think.
I'm going to throw us that one last thing and let it go.
You're not going to let it go, but you can bring it there. I'd love it.
Is there ever been a thought to accomplish, we want kids that play those new sports as they're capable, time management, so on and so forth? How important, you know, if I have three kids, a kid that plays three sports in a year, why does it matter that they're playing one in a season to get the triple threat award?
That, that was my, that was what I was kind of trying to.
Could they, if they varsity lettered in three sports regardless of season? Uh, would that qualify? Or is it important to this group to say, hey, you know what, you need to be playing within sort of three seasons?
Here's, I can tell you the initial process. This is the ultimate example of no good deed goes unpunished. But the ultimate example is the kid that represents your school year round. Goes what the sports medicine people say are using different muscle group each season. Not getting overused, but that was the ultimate originator. Doesn't mean that, that was something we initiated.
That was kind of what I was getting at, just if you maybe change the criteria, because I mean, if I've got a kid that's. Working his butt off the August through December, and then all of a sudden January through March is on really need to get back to the books, get in the classroom. I don't want to penalize that kid because he just, you know, decides to be, you know, I kind of agree with that. I, I think that's.
Well, you know, I'm sure there's a lot of soccer kids that also kick for the football team on Friday. Better varsity, but varsity lettering in both those sports. I don't know. I'm just brainstorming. I'm not, uh, throwing it out there, I guess, thought consideration.
I agree with you.
Did you hear that?
Ten fourteen on November fifteenth.
We agreed to something. Progress, we put that in this.
Okay, um. Discussing the, the, this is another discussion, potential future decision. I think where we settled on is we're recommending that you. Direct us to work with an alternative that we could bring back to you to find approval. Uh, but this deals with circle scoring and golf. After so many stroke of stock. Um, some of our club pros think that's a good idea. There's, there's pros and cons as we've all bounced around. Uh, certainly there probably comes a point in time on a particular hole, you need to pick it up and go off. At the same time, you are going to tighten your margins. Uh, of the scores between them and does that affect, that's something you've got to decide. But golf, I know Joe and Bush have talked about this and we've actually had one manager that just did it on its own. Can't do it in our postseason competition, but. An additional.
Now, I know, I think Mr. Billings was out there, you see a lot of people have the win chess going out. Possible revisions to formatting because of pace of play, and this is something that could possibly address this.
I think circle scoring not only increases the pace of play, and I think it's important, but when you get into that. Eighth grade freshman, seventh, eighth grade freshman kid that's playing golf. It, uh, they create a problem for themselves as far as staying and playing. If they're holding a group up that's took their sevens and went on and they're now on thirteen or fourteen and they're still holding up those other two. I just think it'll increase the participation. I think circle scoring, you know, I mean, and I'm taking from an adult perspective. If I'm playing in a club championship in. Barge town and, and I, I make a, I, I hit not three balls out of bounds on seventeen. Chance are, I'm not playing eighteen. I'm just going on to the house. And, and I think that's what could possibly happen with a lot of kids if we continue just to keep pushing that and pushing that. So I think circle scoring is a, a win, we're going across the board.
I think our request is that you let us take that to golf house and come up with some, what that number might be. Because that could be different, but certainly our areas of the state, we, we, there's been a direct correlation between our, our areas of the state that don't have a lot of courses. And high scores. And some of the later round, it's just natural. They just haven't been out as much.
I think this would be another, an effective sport. I mean, as a former golf coach, I watched you take a thirty-six one day on a hole. That would stick with me forever. My goodness, that poor boy.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, that tree hold that water and God bless him, it's like, you know, it's like, you know, you'll play nights or something, have to coach their circle eight or whatever it is. That could be a number that's still low enough to affect an outcome.
No, you're right. And it certainly will. An eight would affect team rank.
Their DC golfers, they're taking eight on holes, so shoot eight, alright? So we gotta, we gotta remember that number has to be. Yeah, circle score is probably a good thing, but.
What we're circling is your concern.
Yeah, yeah, that's circle eight.
Yeah, 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 just, just a circle score. Most of the golf coaches I've talked to have, have kind of reached out to golf house and they, they've come up, they, there's a number out there and I just use that hypothetically. There's a number out there and, and I've, I've heard double pars. I've heard everything in the world from coaches, but. But I, I, I think there's a number out there that golf house has, and I'm sure there's others, there's other associations across the country that have it. Uh, I just think it's something we ought to look at.
I think that it'll, it'll be a good compromise because the other side that you want to guard against is you don't want to write, we're not in the business of running elite level tournaments. It's only written for those. We do have a lot of people that aren't that, we're not going to say are swimming up for elite level, not going to say are trapped up for elite level, but I think golf house has got good data on that age group. And what that number was going to be. I, I do think there's a couple of those. But this would just be to refer to Jane.
Objection? Move that forward.
Chad, you can, you and I both can talk about this one, but the next two items are related to our, what you might call a mercy rule or. And then it's mercy ruling soccer, it's running clock and, and football. Uh, the threshold by which we get there. Uh, the amateur soccer world has dramatically changed over the last few years and really tends not the norm anymore. Um, and that's why we wanted to get this on there as well.
The current rule right now is if a team has a lead of ten goals or more after completing one half, the game is over. That's the mercy rule. That we unfortunately do have quite a few games throughout the year, especially, you know, the first round of the, uh. Just tournaments that you would have a ten oh score. Um, I think in, in just, you know, being a part of the NFHS Rules Committee for Soccer over the years, it, it seems like that number has kind of dialed back down. People are more commonly using eight. Um, in the end, I think it would be a good idea for us to consider doing that. Um, I think it's a, you know, you could advocate even a different number, but eight seems like a good stepping point for right now. Uh, and, uh, I, I, I don't know of any coaches, uh, that have interacted with me that don't think that that's a good idea. Uh, and it's just a way to, you know, you're trying to find that balance. Between participation. And bad things happen, uh, injuries. Frustration, things of that nature, and, uh. Certainly think that, uh, eight goals would, would be a good starting point, but love to hear the discussion that the board might have.
Basically, this will be a first reading. It doesn't change anything. We bring it back to you that way. You got a chance to talk to a few people you want to talk to, get some feedback. A little bit like, you know, we did that previously with our track change, our golf change or swimming change. We let you go back and talk and finalize.
Would that be eight at halftime?
Yeah, eight after completing one half.
Part of that's a complication of the rule itself. The, the difference in the two, football doesn't have to go till halftime to be official.
Right.
Soccer, you've got, you've got official game provisions. Doing it in the first half is a little bit of a complication in the ruling, so.
Yeah, I.
And it's not, it's not, our personal opinions don't matter. It's rules based. We got to write that.
Would we mirror, mirror that, we feel like? Cause it has a similar.
I don't know that that's been discussed, but we can.
That's a similar rule. I believe it's ten. Come up yet.
Would you all want us to look at it both and let you get feedback to that effect? Cause for you all, we're going to be the only ones having effect that acknowledged that a little bit. A little hole in the ground, maybe a bullet, it's got to be a little. So we'll protect them the most to everybody.
Objection, move that one forward as well.
The football one is, seems relatively minor, but I happened to be at one game where this happened the first round, and then I've heard from four of you, getting games you knew about happening in yours. The, with football, when we first, the board approved a proposal that originally came from our coaches association. To put a thirty-six point running clock in football. Feeling like you needed to do more than score five times. What has happened over the course of time is coaches have regained their senses a little bit. And realize that, that going for two, so you can get to that thirty-six is just as bad as sportsmanship is running up the score. So if we get thirty-five, we probably ought to just run five. Well, that's where this would come from. We just changed that thirty-six to thirty-five. Uh, it seems to be the sentiment of everyone I've talked to about games you saw, and I know when I, I had one, the first game I went to, I. Trying to stay close to home, this first night of playoffs, and it was thirty-six, thirty-six, nothing happened. So, yeah, brutal game.
Any discussion? Move that forward as well.
The, the last, the next to last thing, these are, this is the last two is, is football updates, but, uh. Football playoff forfeiture, and it's a long drawn out rationale, but it's because there's some different history around this. Football has basically said, like all the other sports, every, every sport's the same, that if you're going to withdraw, you need to withdraw before the brackets are done. So there's no mandate that just because you play basketball, you have to enter the district. Or because you play football, you have to enter the football playoff. But if you're going to withdraw, you need to do it before, and the board's supported the feeling before that. If you do it before the brackets are final, there's at least a perception that you're not, oh heck, I'm not going to run this thirty-five point ballgame. I'm small play. Um, you've at least got to play. Withdrawals affect the home team as much as they do the team that's, or the, the losing team, winning team, as much as they do the losing team. Those, you've got, again, unbudgeted revenue you just lost. Um, so we have said that in every sport, if you withdraw after the brackets are done. Now you've got to come in and you're supposed to have a penalty and, and the board's policy statement was the penalty in everything but football is you're out for two years of postseason play. And in football, you're out for the rest of the alignment. Well, in effect. You are punishing future kids. For potentially a one-year administrative decision. What's that do to participation? If those kids are sophomores and now know the next two years, they don't get to play, do they just walk away? If they're going to have to deal with those transfers, I mean, it's just all kinds of problematic. So I wanted to try to get some concrete that I can talk about, uh, putting in place. For football as you discuss your alignment bracket. Cause you're, you're going to find the alignment will perhaps be a little more contentious this year. Because you're not playing within district. So they're going to really care. They're going to not care about who's in the district. They're going to care about what district their number next to. So you'll get appeals for somebody wanting one and two to become one and three, because they don't want to be paired together. You know, there'll be, the football alignment is down, we'll, we'll, we'll be a little crazy. But. For this, we need to have this answer so that when we do the alignment. You know, if you're pulling out, you're out for the whole alignment, you know, if you pull out afterwards. What we did in these two cases that happened this year, we had four withdrawals from playoffs. Two that were before the brackets were set and two after. Tremble County High School was down to thirteen players, but, and that's, theirs was based almost exclusively on injuries. Uh, they had thirteen healthy bodies and nobody that had taken a snap in a game. Cause they had lost their, their quarterback and their backup quarterback who played another position was injured. They had nobody. And their superintendent's a football guy. He did not want four. He did not want that. But his, they just decided thirteen players and eleven person football was not a good idea. They withdrew. I went back to the financial reports for the last two years, um, that had games hosted by their opponent. I talked to the opponent, I said, what do you think? And they were, they were content with a fine of, I think it was six hundred dollars, which is what they've been averaging. Uh, for their first round, and then the, the Tremble County had to, uh, pay the trophy cost. Trophies are ordered weeks in advance, so you can't, can't get around that. So. We bill them, they write a check, all's clear. Well, two days later. We have a school who has a combination of factors and talk to the principal at the school that got four. And I talked to the principal at the school that forfeited too, talked to the AD at length, the school that was forfeiting. They were down to about the same number of bodies that were going to be able to play this game. Now they had a schedule conflict. Uh, for two kids and they had a COVID test. That they were concerned about exposing the rest of the kids for a two hour bus ride. That kid had to go. So their penalty was the previous board standard of a thousand dollar forfeit and you pay the trophy cost. But what we began talking about internally and then in the planning meeting is we really should, we should have a standard penalty. This shouldn't be. Willy nilly, well, this one gets this and this one gets this, but based on the circumstances, because there are people who would manipulate that if they're not careful. And you've got to have a deterrent. So I think that the, where we landed on a proposal is that we base. A by class fine schedule, we not penalize future kids because you withdraw. Um, and I'll tell you the other thing that's gonna happen again next year. Uh, you've got the smallest class. Where you try to have the fewest teams is the most likely to have a situation where they might have to withdraw. You just can't help it. They've only, the reason they're in the smallest class is they've only got a certain number of bodies. When we start talking about, when I bring you proposed dividing lines, et cetera, in January for the alignment. And you start talking about bringing in more teams. From two A's so that you can fill up A and not have forfeits, you're bringing in much bigger schools. Especially a much bigger boys population into, uh, the alignment. Right now, the team that's the smallest two A school is the number one ranked team, if you believe rankings. Um, in football, in some western, it doesn't longer again. I mean, and if you believe, you don't believe that, Beachwood's out there calling. And you don't, you don't get to consider school factors, but you start thinking about. There's a reason why A's small. It always brings up discussion about, about games and things, and that's in the next handout, but should certain games be played? Chad just made a casual comment that we all need to. We got ten nothing softball, soccer and baseball games all the time. We got running clock football games all the time. The world doesn't end. Because we end up with a lopsided game. We have some basketball games that run the clock in first, first and second round. This happens. But we've always kind of been about participation first. And the pundits that want to sit out there and write a symmetrical bracket, well, let's, let's bring three teams to football. Ask that coach that had a bye last, the first week, what they think about that. They'd rather be playing. Never had a coach that didn't want to play. You know, and so there's a lot of issues here, but I think this particular item. Uh, is about that, we, here's what we would say, that you've got a, my proposal is that you've got a fee for class A and double A. You got a fee for triple, you got a fee for four and five, and you got a fee for six. And some of those numbers came off what I'm already seeing in financial reports. The issue. So they're actually a little closer to what they should be. And then you got to pay the trophy. And we turn around and we, what we've done this first time, and it, it's worked the first two times. We just, we build a school, they pay us, we'll distribute the money. Rather than waiting six months and Raceland calls and says, I haven't got my check from Brea. We just go ahead and do it. I don't know if there's any thoughts about that. We need to put a standard in place, I think, that's more hardcoded. Than just saying we'll penalize by by law twenty-seven. Probably need to have a standard in there when you consider the alignment. You were an effective school, you know?
Uh, you know, like I said, it's always tough. You get the playoff, you got to sit away. You know, I, I walked out of middle practice, that game canceled. What you mean, you know, what happened, but, uh, in the finances, I said, you lose finances and, and then you go ahead and let them sit. The next couple of seasons or whatever, that impacts, instead of you thirteen, is, you know, same thing happened next year. And we get another bye, but then you get no funding. So we get zero dollars.
That was, that was, that was Shulkin's comment and some of you know Jeff at Newport Catholic, but he said, we're penalizing both of us for the next two years. If you penalize that way, we've taken them out. It, it just, it's, it's similar to the discussion I heard in this room when we used to take teams out of postseason play because they couldn't count. You play too many games, you took, took the team out because the coach couldn't count. That didn't, the board finally said, that's not right. We're not doing that. We're gonna do some other. So, I don't know. I, I, I just think we need a standard. Whether these numbers are perfect, I don't know.
I like the standard. I like the numbers. I'll be honest with you. I think that's, I think that's adequate.
So the bracket is gonna be finalized at the end of district play, right?
Well, brackets finalized after all the tiebreakers today.
But it's gonna be the last week of district games most likely.
Well, you, you had seven opponents that weren't determined until the last week this time because of all the tiebreaks, so now.
I'm just trying to think that the schools that are gonna try and manipulate the rule are gonna go ahead and pull out before the bracket's set.
No, no, no. Uh, that, now I get your question.
Does that see what I'm saying?
This would take that threshold out. If they withdraw, period.
At all. So the bright, before or after brackets?
If they qualified and withdraw.
Yeah, if they get on the, if they, if they say we're playing and we've got a football team and they qualify and they play their games, it, it, it's there.
Yeah, we want, we want to make sure that that's, uh, yeah, it's just, because it says withdrawal from postseason, period. And the only way you forgive that, we, I'm sorry, I'm still jaded by the COVID stuff, is that if we do have a natural disaster, somebody gets flooded out or something, we probably need to give ourselves a loophole. But, uh, but no, they, that, that bracket set would no longer matter. If you qualified and didn't play, you, you, you pay. And some would argue six A needs to be a little higher, but.
And there would be no further penalty.
That would be the only thing, that, that, under this, that would be the only thing. You don't penalize the future kid.
Yeah, that, that's the only thing in my mind is, is that, is the, the mouth of, of the facts.
Discussion. I mean, some people in, in six A had a fifteen thousand dollar distributed gate last week. Which is, you know, seventy-five hundred a team. Some had four. Now, how much of that's the fact they're charging too little? Uh, you know, you'd really have to do a deep dive and we're just really just now getting towards, but. Do you want us to, do you wanna, here, here's a, here's a, a possibility. Do you want to take this today as a first reading and by the time we get ready to finalize, we'll have more data of current year finances? Maybe give you a better number. That, that makes you more comfortable?
The only issue I have that is if you take current year finances, that doesn't mean next year is going to be the same finances. Uh, you, why don't we, we're, we're trying to read into what an economy is going to be, what, what it's going to be. You know, I don't think we need to be into that financial aspect of telling our schools what, you know, what they need to charge or not charge. Cause they're going to have to pay a fine, so that means they're going to charge more for semifinals, so we're gonna bail out after this thing. I just think it just needs to be a fee. We're, we're doing it just to protect the. The, 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 the entire process. And, and it just needs to be a fee that says, hey, there it is, and let's move forward. I mean, we start getting into dollars. I mean, man, you can. You could seriously, you could, you could open yourself up for fights and arguments from now till doomsday. So there can be a single, a one A school, so we only took in seven hundred bucks. We only think it'll be three fifty.
Right. So. Stripped of whatever we can find out, do you want to try to finalize it in January when you do your alignment? That way you can also have some more discussion on itself. First reading doesn't bind you.
Would you agree that the big issue is the participation in football? I mean, you're trying to get kids, more kids to play football, I would.
Our participation is up year over year statewide. It's not up in our smallest class. Our smallest class is not growing.
I've just, I've been on the side where you're trying to whip up enough kids to take the, take champion title thing. That's difficult.
Yep.
Um, and they know that going in. Uh, that that may be the outcome they're gonna face. Um, and I don't know, is that encouraging participation or discouraging? Um, I guess that's, that's the question. But then the, the financial part of it, I get it. I get that from the racing side of it, but I also see it from the Brea. Uh, so it means, how do they, they take thirteen kids if they're to play racing? Uh, is that gonna encourage more kids taking the ball in?
I, I think that the challenge here is that what, what I want from our administration is different to maybe what you all might want from school seats. I just want them to be, be able to make an informed decision. If we pull out, we know what's gonna happen. If it, I don't have enough and I think it's gonna help, then let me just write a check and we'll go away. We'll just move on to next year. I, I get what you're saying. It, the struggle is that both schools are members and both are impacted, just in different ways. You know, Tremble County, had they been forced to play, I think Todd was really concerned about the future. I mean, because they, they, they're an eighth and ninth grade, or eighth grade JV, ninth grade and tenth grade dominated team. They're all pretty excited. If it's just a fine, they'll, they're, they're gonna keep their participation. If they had to go play, they don't know.
Well, we had that conversation on, on me and Daryl, like people around, you know, the class A. A class that you looked at and changed because you're doing such small numbers and including that kind of deal. You know, where all four teams make it. Again, we, we had this conversation, you take the top two teams, the top three teams, because it is a numbers driven game. You know, right now, we're very fortunate, we have very high numbers. We've got sixty-five kids on the product, they're five, six, four, that's pretty good. But, uh, you know, and there's some schools out there that are never going to invest more than fifteen or fourteen. But when it comes to playoffs, it makes it very difficult. You know, we talked about it, is that right, fair, or we keep it the same? I don't know, but if I say, we have our problems because of them. Then you don't want to change it either. I mean, I see both sides and then a conversation, I don't know what the answer is either.
You've got some schools in the single A that are three times the size of the. Yeah, I mean, we've got a hundred and fifty girls and boys in high school and we, we've got a thirty.
Which is the reason why the historically, and I can still hear the late Elvis Johnson giving this speech. That's why A needed to be smaller because you can have an exponent factor and still be in the class and you don't need to bring anybody else down.
Yeah.
And he was adamant on that. And the other thing is, I'm sorry, guys, ladies, I, I see an awful lot of competition as you do. There's some pretty sorry basketball teams out there. And some sorry baseball teams, but we're gonna put them all on postseason.
Yeah, I, and I would rather see that single A district pay the thousand dollars and that athletic director and coach and school. Say, there it is, we're done, we're not penalized. Now let's divert our efforts into trying to get recruitment back into our program.
Yeah.
Let's spend more time in our program. We know what we got to do now. Pay the thousand dollars and go on. Let's face it, in the grand scheme of things, a thousand dollars is not breaking any district in the state. So, so let's let them pay that mon, or twelve hundred dollars, let's pay it and then let them focus on what they need to focus to get back next year. And just be done with it. Say, there it is. That way it doesn't put this board in a situation to be arguing about it every year. The guest discussing it every year, you know, having them have the staff and the commissioner make a decision. Next, you know, next October on what he's gonna have to do. Here it is. That's our policy. There it is, folks. You know, pay fines, move on, go back to work, guys. You know, I wish you the best. Hope you get twenty more kids next year.
And I think we see that in all schools. There are those, regardless of what division you're in, they're always gonna be, they're reloading every year. They've got the numbers and the rest of us are just kind of like the. A king's in valleys, just like football is, it's different. It's heavy combat, you know, it's a lot harder seeing kids to play.
And lots of numbers.
Yeah.
It, and that's one of the reasons why in certain parts of the state soccer hadn't grown. You've seen so many people. It just takes to compose a team.
And I'd rather have my coach telling, telling fifteen kids, hey, we've got seven more guys coming next year. We're gonna be ready next year, guys. And have say, we're punished next year. You're, you know, hey, guys, we're two years away. You're gonna be juniors before you get a chance to compete.
Well, all of a sudden now, we got twelve coming back. You're right. And that's the topic of that hand and I, I would agree with that. That's, that's, that's the avenue.
In process, what I'm hearing is that we want to finalize this with the alignment parameters. But you are in favor of that being the withdrawal and whatever you call it on that. Okay.
Do they get the same thing as you?
I think it's the same decision, but it's different.
Uh, uh, and I'll be honest with you. I think, I think that's even better. I mean, I think that even adds more credence to doing it the way you do. If we, we got a school, Tremble County has fifteen kids and they forfeit this year. And then next year they've got sixteen kids and they're still in a situation, they forfeit again. Then the next year, let's pray to God, they've got eighteen or twenty kids. I, I think it's just part of it. It's gonna happen. You know, that's, that's like to say, or, you know, i- if this happens again with another school that done what Bowling Green did, are we gonna do the same thing? Or we just, ah, we know what we do.
Well, here's the other piece that I think needs to be in the back of your head if the discussion comes up. It's much better that they stay in the district, but pull out of postseason. Because they're not impacting the teams that lose games. So if we can give them that way of at least having to adhere to those contracts. Cause when you approve the alignment this coming year, you're contracting those games for a thing. So I think that, you know, this, making it where you're shooting more with a, with a rifle than a shotgun, you're just aiming at the withdrawal. And, you know, I te, I teased a fellow in your area who is the administrator in a school that withdrew twice and now he's at a new school and they withdrew this year. And I told him, I said, I think it's you. And I laughed with him, you know, and he said, we're trying, bud, we're trying.
And I think that's important too, especially using RPI in football, that we keep those folks doing those, taking care of their contracts.
Yep.
We got a game Friday night that because of an RPI situation, we're gonna have a state championship down Danville Friday night. Let's face it, guys.
Yeah.
I mean, for the most part, I mean, that's being realistic. You know, we need to keep them in those contractual situations.
They got the benefit of that. That happens. That happens. And I would remind you that there was a certain school that requested to not be in regions one through four. But this time in alignment being five through eight for scheduling purposes, and now we're objecting to being in five through eight because of that. It happens. It happens. There's always good stories, okay? Um, the last item, um, is just a, just to, to remind, especially Ms. Carter, Hudson and others. Fun times are coming in January. Um, w- we should. We should get, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I had a fair amount of questions at the last topic. So the recommendation, are you still fine? If I say it in, in the second week of the season, we're not gonna compete in the postseason for whatever reason.
No, cause you didn't.
Still fine, or is the only fine that you don't hate?
You're only fined if you're eligible and decide not to play.
Okay.
Because otherwise I have, I'm not eligible if I don't play all my district teams. So I pull out and don't play my opponents. I didn't, I've got to pay, I probably had to pay contract.
Eight ballgames and figure out the eight game, you know, we're gonna have to cancel the last two games of the season because we don't have enough players and I'm gonna be fine.
Yes, because you would have had contracts for those games. It's a, yep.
So what if the team tells you prior to us realigning. Coming up that for the next two year, by any of them, if we're gonna have a two year, four year, that we're not going to participate at all.
And they wouldn't be contracted for those games and they would not.
But they could still play football.
Correct. They could do what? Six? Kind of remind me of the standings, six? There's six schools, I think Jackson County comes to mind, that, that play a schedule, but they're at the bottom of the standings because they're not in a good spot.
So if somebody pulls out in week two, how does, but they were in a district at that point, what happens to those district games?
The contracts are gonna dictate ninety percent of it and almost all of them will be contracted.
Say, I'm not playing after week two and I could still play those district games and not have any problem?
Uh, I'm, I'm not sure that we want to get too deep into the dog, get my homework plays without looking at it. Yeah, I think we'd have to, we'd have to really look at that. I don't think anyway, anybody can strategically manipulate it to a block. Cause if they're in a district, they're obligated. It's like Joe's question. They're obligated to finish the season if they've got contracts. Now, those finishes could be ten forfeits. But that can happen now.
But then their contracts are gonna absorb more than the.
We don't need to fine them because they're gonna have a whole bunch of contracts.
You've got schools already, once they see that alignment, especially those, you know, once that true, true and home and alignment come. And there will be probably some that say they're not gonna.
Well, we already have a request from a large school, it would probably five A. Wanting to know how long the withdrawal period is gonna be if they pull out after the alignment's done. So, because they want it to be two years. It is. It is. So from a historical program. But to finish up on the, on what you're gonna be looking forward to, and I, we can all, there's gonna be ways to manipulate anything. I don't know how you can manipulate once the alignment process right now. Pretty straightforward. I should get, uh, according to, to Ms. Lowman at, uh, KDE, I believe I'm pronouncing it right. We should get enrollment data, uh, by Thanksgiving. Uh, they're cleaning it up now. And, uh, we'll be, as she said, we're second on her distribution list behind LRC's stats. So we'll get those numbers and be able to come, have an alignment for you all that would, does not allow an opportunity to play up. So it's gonna really contract the profit. Uh, now they will argue about what number you put in. I can tell you in drafting, it'll go west to east, as it always has. And if we run out of schools, we run out of schools. There could be a situation where a school in the, in quote unquote, the west. Uh, is in east of Corbin, just because there's nobody west of it. That's just the way, we can't tell for buildings or nothing. So we would draft that, we'd get it to you all. Um, time for us to consider in January, your previous discussion was at the January meeting, you would review it. And decide at the January meeting if you were gonna send it out and finalize in February or decide if it, if our late, if our plate is in. That'd be your all's call. Uh, no factors right now are being considered other than, uh, enrollment. We do have a suggestion from one of our IDs that might have been mentioned a minute ago that was look at multiple factors. And you get to the points, kind of like the RPI discussion, you get to the point where everybody wants to look at it to help them. But they're not necessarily looking to do something statewide. So, but I did, I did attach a couple of things to this last item that I want you to, I want you to think about. One is the NFHS participation history, and we've got it since two thousand, it labeled since two thousand and two, but I was able to go back and get prior data. And you can look at where our numbers are, I can tell you that there's a, there's a big problem after seventy-nine, and the reason is. From nineteen seventy-nine until, from eighty until nineteen ninety-two, the federation only wanted varsity numbers. Every other year before and after, they use all, all levels. So that's why you, you wouldn't want to draft this, but your big jumps have occurred. Um, you're, it's obviously even with just using varsity, when you expanded from three to four classes, we increased a little over ten percent in participation. Uh, when we went from about nine thousand to ten thousand over a two-year period, when you put spring practice back in in ninety-seven. You jumped. Because participation was able to, to participate over the years, and when the sixth class came out, you, you got up to what we're now seeing, uh, in the thirteen, fourteen thousand range. So I don't really listen much to keyboard warriors that would like a different system. Because what you all have approved has allowed more participation. So, I mean, you've got them up. So while, while somebody else might not like a blowout, others do, and you're never gonna please everybody with this. The other, the other thing that's attached, just because this always comes up. You look at the first round opening scores and we only got twelve years, I just wanted to make two quick points about that. Um, obviously this year's first round games had a pretty good spread in some classes, five A was a running clock basically average. For those first round games. Um, but you will also notice, this is the two points I wanted to make to you, you will notice that no matter what you do. The gap is greater than four times that. No matter what's, no matter what you do within and out of district, but it is higher, your average first round score is higher. When you're playing non, you're not playing in your district, the three years you played in your district, it was lower. Now, there's probably some football reasons for this, I could go back probably and find the numbers, uh, in the four-year period back in the two thousand zeros that we played in district and certainly the years of the super district. You, uh, and, and two of you pointed this out. You're playing somebody two weeks later that you've already got film on. So you probably are better prepared than you are for that out of region team, maybe that's good for a score or not. Bottom line is, it doesn't matter what you do, and our numbers are actually better than the national average in terms of those margins. So, you know, just in case people bring it up. We know, everybody's aware that the price of allowing kids into postseason is you have more ten run games. You have more ten goal games, you have more thirty-five point running clock, you have more slaughters in basketball. That's the product of getting the kids to start over in postseason. So, data's there.
They're still in playoffs. Kids are still playing.
They're able to do something.
In the comments, Serge, we'll move to those items forward. Uh, I think we're gonna take about a ten-minute break real quick. And for the January meeting too, if you all want to, I, I'm selling care packages, so if y'all wanna buy a care package for that three or four-day adventure, let me know, I'll make sure. Go ahead and get started. Moving on to, uh, number five items for discussion, possible action, five point one, finance and business.
These are planned action items for the, for today that we definitely would action on. The first one is a budget amendment, we've got a, as is listed in the, the general ledger, we've got to set aside. Multiple thousand dollars for physical plant repairs, and we have finally postponed as long as we can, some work in the museum area. If you go back behind the, the series of tables that we meet back there, you can see a concrete line coming up through carpet, basically. Um, the building has, it, it was tough when we built it in the, in early nineties. That end of the building was the latest to get compaction, they waited forever, we were three months late moving in because it wouldn't settle. So it has now settled even more, and it probably was not helped by the blasting for the new hospital. They blasted us every day at three o'clock for a period of months. And so now, when you go back there, you can see that they need to do some repairs. We had various people come by, we had carpet people, we had concrete people. Uh, we only had one vendor that was able to do both and had a proven track record of doing both, and it was a carpet company out of Danville, it's done, done pretty good for a couple of years. But you've got that, and then you've also got the carpeting up on the stage. The stage is a hall of fame area, and in most cases, if you were to look at it, any of your managed buildings would say that carpet needs to be stretched. The problem is when they laid the carpet down, it's got a wood, uh, floor platform, they glued the pad to the wood. Then they glued the carpet to the pad. There's absolutely no way to, to stretch that, it's all glued together. And coming off is a huge labor job. Couple of quotes we got were in the fifty thousand dollar range, including the carpet, and this guy's gonna do the whole shooting match for thirty-one. Uh, because they want to use, they want to be able to say they did it. Uh, we're gonna go back with carpet squares instead of roll carpet because that's obviously a better, easier maintenance. And so what I need you all to do is this action item is just approve, moving that money from the physical plant reserve, meaning it won't affect current year. And we'll just use that for that project. So that's what that item will be in the regular meeting.
Any discussion? Do you know about having Ford?
Five one two is a formal approval by you all, but it's actually action that is already done because by the contract we signed with the network. Uh, the NFHS network, they met certain thresholds and it automatically extends. But we wanted in the record that the board saw it, the board saw the data and does extend it. Um, you've got the cover documents and everything, I think the, there's a GHSA history document that talks about potential revenue. I just, because we don't detail this very much, I'll tell you that. Our basic guarantee from the network is sixty grand, we're one of the small states, they get sixty grand, and we're the only state that puts one hundred percent of that money into the production of our events. So when you see prep spin there doing video work, you see all their camera people, you see our announcer, that's where that pot of money's coming from, the page there. So it's, uh, been a good arrangement, this we're just giving formal approval, uh, to make that extension that they've already legally gotten granted anyway. So there's not much we can do, uh, and know that we want to, but it's still guaranteed revenue. We're also getting into, the network, uh, and its viewership has gotten to the point where it's gonna start becoming a number you need to be concerned about, uh, in a positive way. This variable performance share, which means we get money based on how well they perform, continues to go up. Uh, and it, it's gonna rival two or three of our championships in terms of revenue. So it's a revenue source that helps you when, when the, uh. When it happens, when it happens that bad weather to fall event, you still got that revenue coming in. And I know there's still people that haggle about a subscription cost, but we hear less about that each year. And they've certainly made efforts to fix their camera problem. We know our schools are out there, there's some schools that are willing to pay a different vendor. A whole lot more money than to use the free services of the network, that's their choice. That's their choice. We had a semifinal game last year that I'm glad I wasn't there because of the condition of the field, but I was glad it was on. Somebody's broadcast, like keep up with the scores and get stuff ready for the finals, but that's really, we don't tell our schools they have to use a certain vendor. We just, for postseason, if they're gonna use somebody else, they gotta pay a rights fee. And Connor, uh, manages that, uh, very, very well, so that extension needs to be given formal approval. Five one three is something that I'm surprised we're this early talking about off the pandemic, but. We had, uh, all of our financial resources in PNC Bank for, I don't know how long, since they opened a branch across the street, it's convenient. They were the sponsor, whenever National City, they were the title sponsor of our Sweet Sixteen. And we developed a banking relationship, they have online functionality that most banks don't have. That makes the management quite a bit easier. But their fees for managing repurchase agreements. Which is a way that we can keep all of our money insured, and those of you who have repo agreements know how they work, well, their fees. Were far higher than we were yielding on it, so we stopped. We basically have money in various accounts that, uh, we want to be sure we get insurance back on them. So one of the things we've talked to both our auditor about, and I want to do this in consultation with those of you on the audit firm, I, I could do it, I've done it for, I don't know, thirty years managing our money, but I'd really rather have you all involved. Uh, at least on an informational basis, uh, we want to start diversifying where that money is, we're up to two and a half million dollars liquid. Which is about fifty percent of our budget. So we're getting to the point, we gotta work, we need to, we need to be sure we're, we need, we're, it's insured. But we also don't want to have all our eggs in one basket where if they're suddenly a failure. Of PNC for some reason. Now, they're a big bank, you don't think they'd fail, but we didn't think a couple of these others would fail either. So we've already got existing relationships, we have a sponsor relationship with University of Kentucky Credit Union, which has a Kevin office nearby. And a, a relationship with Traditional Bank, which quite frankly, when it was Montgomery and Traders Bank in Mount Sterling, kept us open. Uh, they were the bank that loaned us money when, when their board a- and the former, now deceased commissioner made a really bad financial decision. And decided to build this building, and Montgomery and Traders bailed us out. Well, they're now traditional, we kept a retirement fund over there. But we think that there's ways we can use those banks as well as any other bank that has a good relationship with us, and maybe it's a sponsorship, maybe it's endowing something, whatever. We'd like to put some money and not have it all in one source. But I do want to keep the board informed about that. So what we would need is, um, permission to, to open up those accounts pending the consultation with the audit finance. Again, I don't want to go off long ranger here. Um, but we do this, and it's, I think we make a special emphasis on those entities that, that support, actively support our activities and efforts as well as maybe even the foundation. That we should be rewarding people that work with us. So that was the, this would give us authority to start moving on that. I do know, I, I now have a date set up, and I apologize, I can't give it to you, I don't have it off the top of my head. Next week, we're having a, a conference call with folks at, at an investment firm that deals with an insurance firm. That deals with nothing but structuring foundations. To kind of give us some, some insights on, uh, law, so Chad can fill out his final applications, the missing step toward. We're registered with Secretary of State with a foundation, but we don't have the five oh one status, we got those kinds of things. And we finally got back on their schedule. They, uh, they're tremendous. And we want to lean on some of you that have existing relationships with different boards and foundations, and especially as, as people rotate off and we. Separate board and foundation, we definitely want to keep some people involved. So that's item five one three. Those are all three of the financial things I'd ask, uh, uh, Ms. Jared and, and President, at the point in time those come up, that we do those in separate.
Sir? Do you know what it was called? Five point two into track and field?
Yeah, the next two are dealing with events that you've already approved, the event structure, these are just parameters we were putting in the competition rules. To try and, and address. One of the things that I just wanted to be sure you all are aware of, because it doesn't take action. Um, we have had a few schools reach out to, to Sarah, and only a couple of them, but about the limitation of seasons for track and field. Um, long ago, and up until, not that many years ago, indoor track had a limit of four meets. And outdoor track had a limit of fifteen. The board, after hearing a lot of feedback from the schools, realized that those four meets were an advantage for the people that are in close proximity to an indoor track. But they actually got more track opportunities than the ones that weren't. So the board said, look, nineteen. Same you had before, you decide when they are. I think some of the concern this year came from people who thought perhaps that the indoor state meet was gonna count against that nineteen, which it does not. But that, just so you know, there's nothing that would preclude having a separate limit. But that's what the, the history is, we already addressed it, and we're already finding out through the development of the state indoor meet that we don't have, we still have schools that are not gonna have access to indoor track at all. So it's probably better where it is, but that question comes up in various meetings, and we're everybody informed with the information. So that does not require action early than accepting report. Five two two, this is Brian Ball and others have. A lot of time trying to finalize a way, we would love to have rolled out an indoor track meet that had regional qualifications, but. I refer you to the earlier mention, nobody's got any facilities, we have an indoor facility near Mason County and a new one at the Norton Center in Louisville. And in reality, that's about it for in-state competitive places tomorrow. But that doesn't mean people can't go out of state, so I think you've, we talked about this, this is a collaborative effort, but I, I feel free to take it away.
Can I explain what this is? Okay. So what we've kind of laid out here is how we could still implement the indoor state meet without a regional qualifier. Um, at this point, due to the lack of those indoor facilities to have those regional meets, we would recommend, um. Utilizing regular season performances and mile split. Um, to rank those athletes in each event, and then at a certain deadline. Um, we recommended about ten days before the state meet that we, you know, take and pull those top twenty-four, and those would be who are in that, including ties. Um, for both the runs, the dash, dashes, runs, relays and, uh, field event. So it'd be twenty-four plus any ties. Um. I've worked with mile split to ensure we can do that, and that they have the capabilities to help us do that, and so. They're able to do that for us, they're actually working on some things to ensure that it makes it easier for our people. Um, as far as timers and, and Rob and the job he does and creating our state database, that sort of thing. Um. And then at the bottom, I suggested, uh, the type of events that we should do. We did some research across the country. And so the NFHS rules that list the events and what states do across the country kind of varies. And just so you know, a lot of that depends on the facility, whether it's a two-hundred meter facility or a one-twenty or whatever it may be. Um, these fit in our current facility, um, and they match kind of what our coaches association has been doing for the last several years. So, um, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions, but that's kind of where we've gone to get this, at least the first year's inaugural indoor state meet. And then continue to take feedback and address after this year, but this would kind of be the plan for this month.
I think the thing to keep in mind is, um. We're trying not to start the first year with a meet the facility can't even hold. We're gonna have to hold one to see how big the meet can really get and go. So that's why the twenty-four was settled on, there was, and I apologize because I was the one, we, we shared notes back and forth for the last several months. And, and the field events would be plus ties and the running events would be including ties, but I think you've got to kind of constrict it to three heats or four heats in the six-point game. Otherwise you, you're not gonna get everything in. The, the field events, you could have a bunch of ties, but that doesn't necessarily change your schedule that much to have three or four extra high. Versus having to have another heat in the running. So this will be a starting point, this will be put in the competition rules, but we need to get something out because they've, obviously, they're gonna start January first.
Start practice December one.
Yeah, but, but, but competition where they could make a mark, start right after first of year. So it's gonna be a tight window for them, basically what, six, seven weeks to make a mark that would qualify for the state meet. And right now, some states have evolved a little further to where they now have a standard, if you make that time, you know you're in. We're not at that point where we've got reliable data, where we could say, if you get this performance, you're automatically in, we just gotta kind of take a certain number. We won't know that till the deadline is set.
We could set a standard, we talked about that, we actually gathered a bunch of standards from across the country.
And they were all over the board.
They were all over the board. Um, I even did some digging into our last few years of coaches averages and that sort of thing, and it's so hard to set a. You know, so many seconds for a sixty-yard dash, and maybe we get seventy kids that meet that. And now we have an unmanageable event, so we felt like this was the best kind of way to structure the first year.
And I think that the idea would be that we run it this way for two or three years and we've got our own data now. And we can then maybe do a performance standard or do something, but you really can't do without our data. Especially if there's consistency of data and performance at our state meet. And that's gonna probably be the only facility we're gonna have access to for a while. The new facility across town does not have seating, so it's not gonna be where fans can come in for it, so.
Will there be three, three classes of boys and girls or one group?
I think they're playing right now, they have three.
You're saying, and then, will there be a date where schools have to declare they're gonna enter or how they were, because I just wondered, even though some schools may or may not have meetings, they're gonna go try to, if we try to change that yet.
I think if you, we do, but, but to, to say that our schools haven't really edited their rosters very well would be an understatement. But, um, at the same time, that's why this ten-day thing is so critical. You know then, if they don't have that performance by then, they're not in.
And it's not really like outdoor, they're not gonna enter.
Right.
They're gonna have to qualify. So if we say, you know, March first on February twentieth at nine PM, the best running course performances in that event are state bowl. So.
There'll be team ran, individual.
Oh, yeah.
It will be managed basically the same way. And we're fully expecting one class to be smaller than the other two this first year to the C S B. Also, one of the reasons why years ago when we redesigned our medals, we can even reuse them. Because we can take plates off the back and set others.
Yeah, there's going to be some classes that don't actually have twenty-four performances and three counts, you know, like. But we don't really know yet.
So was David been contracted to work here?
There's already been an arm twist to conduct the awards exactly the same way as the outdoor meet. So those of you that are on that regular team expect. So that's where it landed. And, uh. Unless somebody has an amendment or something, I just think we've kind of got to try it and see how it works. It's kind of like the swimming thing. You're going to have to try it and see how it works.
However many. Well, but I'm saying there's not going to be more, there's not going to be twenty-four kids that actually had a performance in our state in some of these events.
Right. But in the ones that do, there won't be like a, a declared deadline where you could take those next, where you could fill the field. That kind of throwers, maybe those, maybe there's five in there that aren't going to declare. So you could include the next, next best five. Do you know what I mean?
I think at this point, the, we've got to be careful biting off too much the first time we're doing this. But I think we already have an event that's going to favor schools in proximity to the state site. So we got to kind of, I think we really do have, and, and that's what the states around us had added. Indiana was adamant, you need to, you've got to get your own data to really make the decision to, your copulation.
But that, but having that declared date though would, would still feel probably, you know, Louisville heavy, right?
So, so what you're asking, if we translate this, is you've got your ten days before that you know who your top twenty-four are. And then if five of them say they're not going to come, then you could, you still have other performances to fill in.
Right. That's what I'm saying. I don't know. It's just, I mean, just to fill the field. Because that might increase with his racing later, right? And that's. Because a lot of this is going to be known, right?
Well, and we'll do, you know, what, whatever.
I don't know.
It's what we're directed to do. But in comparison to outdoor track, we have lanes empty all the time because we don't ask you. After you qualified from region, are you coming? And so they may show up ranked twenty-fourth and they didn't want to run and get lapped. And so they just don't come.
Bad business.
We don't roll in anybody in outdoor track. If that, if that from region to state, we don't have that same comparison in this month of right now.
Okay.
And I think overall, I think that's an old track code for many years. I think it's, uh, you know, we used to have state indoor and it's very similar to that when we were broadband and, and, uh. I think it's a good way to start out. They're, they're going to be there. They're going to know. They're, they're buying for those twenty-four spots and they're going, they're going to know. They're going to want to be there.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure this, especially the first year, you don't have that many declines, but it's something you have to hone.
But it's something certain.
And, and a little bit different in distance races than the heat races too. So it's. More likely.
Something easy data wise to be able to gather. Hey, we, we have twenty-two, we're in the results. Like we would know that some of them didn't show up.
I think the concern that Sarah's expressed and other states have expressed is that if we set the twenty-four number too high, we may be guaranteeing that everybody's in. This first couple of years. We'll just see. I'm, I'm, the thing, we, we've sent out two memos now, who notices now, we're concerned about. This sport is one of about six where our school athletic administrators. May not be involved every day with rosters. Cause their coaches are using a third party system. So they may be using the high tech for swimming or they may be using, uh, they may be using, uh, yeah, mile split for the track. They may be using. Track wrestling and they may be not even informing the administrator. So, so the data we may be relying on is what we can see, and yet maybe it's not quite current. So we're, this is going to be, you'll see a big push following what, what we do today with track, uh, with wrestling and with swimming. You'll see a big push to get information up there. We've done it a couple of times. We've got to have it. I mean, and just the activity Rob works with with these sports, you were two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, yeah. See play versus, I got play versus to send me how many kids are registered in there? And it was way short. And it's just because. In our system, because the coaches are used to going there and loading their rosters in, because that's where they got to go to play. But they got to be in our, you know, list of eligible players.
And we've, we have requested that roster ability from mile split to be able to start to see what the gap difference is.
Yeah, I think for all of those, actually we talked about last few weeks a lot. I think our, our staff that's responsible for those events are going to get some more. Peak behind ability of the data. And we can get more accurate data to, to go forward. Great. That's what we needed was discussions and you also give us some stuff to focus on, monitoring. I just hope we get twenty-four entries in there today.
We will in the bigger part.
Oh, yeah.
Uh. Is Paul making it, sir? She goes out on the floor with five point three swim and diving.
But she's still on the hot seat, but for the new members, I'll give you a little bit of background. Um, swimming is the one sport that we are not the only sport and, and we're not the only state in the country that doesn't have facility big enough. Uh, matter of fact, most. And we made a decision inside of ten years ago to go from five regions to nine. And it has really increased our overall participation in swimming. That comes with a cost. That actually created more facility issues that are stating that we went from thirty-two people, uh, to per event for, but to forty. Per event. And you take that times relay teams and you take that, then all of a sudden you've just got all kinds of people. And in the stands. And if you've got, for example, if you got in the second session of a swim meet. For the finals, you've got a bunch of the people that didn't make the finals occupying the stands. Well, that's seats you can't sell to the fan, do you? And we've had parents not be able to get in the facility for several years now to see their own kid compete. Especially in the earlier races. That's, that should never happen. But I'll tell you, uh, as I told the board a year ago, we had parents at the front gate asking. Uh, Butch was manning that front gate and I heard one conversation, lady said, why don't you just do it like you did COVID? Just give everybody two tickets. Every parent. We, we can't fit everybody in the biggest auditorium in the state. If you only gave them two tickets. We still can't because we qualify so many people. So that's why the board approved, you've already made the decision to split the state into three qualifying rounds. And then from there, we advanced to one final meet. What we've done is put some parameters on that. Uh, but there's basically four issues you've got to do to address this capacity issue. You got to look at multiple first round sites. You already checked it off. She's got some sites that, that she's recommended to me and I'm recommending to you. We've got to change the way we do relays. We can't just allow people to just keep adding and have eight people on one relay and eight on another and eight on another. They're going to have to pick an eighth that goes through the postseason. If you're going to control both deck and stands. And that will be the one place that your longstanding program will, will, will not want. Cause that's, that's the way they pointed people to death for you. That's part of the reason for the gap between a successful nonsense. They're going to have to, just like every coach does, you've got a roster. And it's worked in track and it's worked in cross country for years. You've got a defined roster for postseason. You've got to look at something. Sorry, Chad, they're not going to be on that egg. Sorry, not this time. Keep working. And that's, that's part of coaching. So you got to address that. You got to discuss how we're going to qualify from region to state and then how we're going to go from state to state finals. So that's the intro. And then to address those, you want to, I asked you to look at facilities and we've got three facilities that have made themselves available. For two thousand twenty-four.
Yeah. So February, yeah, those three day or sites, Russell County for regions one to three, the University of Louisville for regions four to six. And the new Scott High School pool for regions seven to nine to be those host of what we were following that state first round. Um, and those are the ones that I recommended. I did have, I did have a backup site, but Scott did finish their pool and opened early October, maybe. Um, ish. And so.
That's a little one inch tile.
With a bunch of little one inch tile. They were worried about getting installed, but it looks great. We have confirmed with all of those sites. Um, you want me to go on to the format stuff or you?
No, we're going to do them one at a time.
Okay. So that's what I've recommended for those three spots.
There's two things that I want to point out to you. The association is going to lose money. Because there's no, there's no profit possibility on football. I mean, on swimming, sorry. If you, you're not going to, you're very seldom going to do it, but we know that. So this is, so this is not a, everybody that's out there, it's a money grab. It's actually extending a money loser. If our state meet does not profit either. So, but it's okay. It's what we need to do for the students. That's where it's called a loss leader. You do it because everything else is good. So don't, don't let anybody come to you and say, this is all a money grab. It's not. It's a money give. Secondly, is I think it's important to note that our regional pairings are just for this year. The one, two, three being paired together, four through six and seven to nine. As we see this year and add this year's participation data, we've got long-term data on participation in swimming. We need to look at some adjustments to the alignment for balance in some areas. But we did not want to commit long-term. It's always going to be one to three. It's always going to be four to six. There are some issues you all that are in the Lexington and Louisville area. We'll hear about those because they don't, Northern doesn't want to be with Lexington every year and Northern doesn't want to be with Louisville every year and Lexington only is Louisville every year. It's the same argument you hear in class football. My six A football. Maybe there's some rotation. Maybe there's different ways to pair. That's a further discussion. We need to get parameters for twenty-four. I want to make sure those two are clear. So the first motion would be just approve those things.
He's dashing. Here and then and then goes on forward.
Second one is dealing with the relay cards. You want to talk about that?
Yeah. So each relay in historically, coaches were able to enter eight names on a relay card for the region competition. If they qualified for state, then they could enter a different eight names on the relay card. Um, and some of that is done, the way sport is, swimming is set up. Some of that's not done till the scratch meeting or the morning of, and. It's, it's really pretty last minute because of that and that their ability to be able to change those. It has made it very difficult for us to have any idea which kids are actually supposed to be in the pool. I do know, because a coach told me to it, to my face, that I just tell them to tell you all they're an alternate so they can come in and deck with us. A kid that never had any intention of being on that relay card. But we don't know that when we let them in. So we check the roster, they're on the roster, you know, I think. So what we have proposed to help with the deck space issue, um, is that there's two options here. They could select those eight. And then go from region all the way through. Or option two would be they could select those eight at region. They could select those eight at the first round state site. And then they're locked the rest of the way through. But locking it at some point is what we're asking.
And what you see in some of the other individual sports, Star Rock Cross Country, where you have a ten person postseason roster. It certainly makes management of the meat more consistent because that can stays throughout the postseason and they can simply, the day of the race, they wish seven. Unless they're in one particular region, maybe it's on everybody, but that was in the state by the coach.
Postmente.
But you got the same thing in track. You still are only picking four. So you've got an eight person pool, no pun intended, you got an eight person pool of people. You pick four and you can pick four one week and four the next, four the next, as long as they're off that same night. Well, that's what is being proposed here. This is the only sport that has that open-ended substitute. What for those.
We had eight, it was over your eight, you could run and stand four you wanted to. But once they were on that original eight, that's what we said.
And that covers you for the kid that gets the flu, the kid that can't come, you still got plenty. It's not saying take four, pick four. So that's what's being recommended. Your threshold on doing this, obviously this changes the element of how many people are on deck, which is a part of the advantage. But your threshold is, do you want to have the same for what's now all three meets? Or just two? And we suggested for the first year, just two. That was what you wanted.
Yeah, I think when you look at the numbers of how many are going to be at these sites or less, that you could allow some of that flexibility if you wanted to between region and first round state. Because you're only sending, well, we haven't decided on that, I guess, but. The proposal is to only send sixteen in each event to each site. So them having flexibility to change that after region doesn't really, as long as we know what eight it is. So that it's manageable for Scott High School and Russell High School, um, and Louisville to know which kids they're letting in.
Yeah. Operations wise, we'll have to create a way and, and you can probably do it through the software, but, but we may end up doing it another way, kind of like we do golf. Where they have to list those eight and we get it distributed to all the sites and even our data people. Uh, we may have to become mechanic. It's obviously easier if you get it for the region, but we thought that was a big bite the first year. Because to put a limit on it, all of a sudden limit all three seemed a bigger bite and maybe we should take the first year. You're into, you're in nitty gritty of the competition. The recommendation is just to be able to change after the region. And the third item. You want to detail your, your, this is the, this is the key that the, the schools all want to know right now, how we're going to.
Yeah.
And, and they want to, here's, here's threshold things that you'll hear. They want to preserve as many at large as possible, especially the strong swimming region. But they want opportunity for every region to at least think they got a shot. And I think she's threaded the needle.
Yeah. I tried to give you two different options here. Um, we do know that you like statewide participation. So. Um, the suggestion would be to actually increase the number of state qualifiers in each event from forty to forty-eight. Which would allow for two heats of, uh, sixteen at each site. So it'd be two heats in every event at each site. And then from that, there's two options, how we would bring them to state. We can put you the top two in each event at that site automatically qualify and the next best. Uh, ten times from that region. I'm sorry, not ten times, fifteen, fifteen times. You could do top two automatic qualifiers from each site or top three automatic qualifiers from each site. And then fill the rest in with the next best ten times. In order for them to advance to each site. So regions one, two and three, what I've proposed, will get the top two, which is what they've always been getting. Of each region would advance to site, that, that site first round. And then the next best ten times from that pool of regions. So one, two and three would still have all sixteen competitors at site number one. Regions four, five and six at site number two and so on and so forth.
And conceivably, region three could have all ten at large. Just because they're that strong. Which, which addresses an issue you're going to hear from some of the high, high participation region. So they can still get a good portion of the at-large.
So the, I guess I really only have one option for how they advance from region to that state first site. And that is it. The top two automatic and the next best ten from that pod of three regions would advance to the first site. Then after that, each site, we would bring the top two automatic or top three automatic. This is the two options. Of each event from that site. So if it's top two from each site, we'd get six automatic from site one, two and three. If it's top three, we get nine. And then you just fill the field to twenty-four with the next best times from the entire state. Which again, could all come from site number two, could all come from site number one. It just depends. That kind of preserves what I feel like since I've been here, the board has been about, which is that state representation to where you're at least getting someone out of each pod. But that's kind of the two options I've laid out, whether you want to bring top two and next so many or top three and next so many.
And I think a couple of our staff, when we finalized this, a couple of our staff that previously managed swimming agreed with her that at least the perception of three. Where there's a thought that if I'm the absolute best in each region, I got a pretty good shot at making that second round state and then the rest of them be at large. And you, you kind of combine both. You know, you get, and, and you're only dealing, for example, in David's area, which I think is going to be four, five, six. You're, you're still dealing with the vast majority of the at-larges. It's probably going to come from one area, but the other two. And, and actually two of those regions are going to be there. I think you're going to be, you're going to actually please both. But this is one of those that goes back to the Judge Keller example. That I've talked to y'all about before with, with the whole task force. When he said with compromise, everybody gets something and nobody's happy. I can tell you that's going to happen. There, somebody's going to find a negative tick to anybody at some point. But this is, she's come up with a way that, that appears to be and gets you the right numbers, gets you to what's going on. Uh, still advances twenty-four to the state meet. Uh, which is still a full house. As you had, remind me, Sarah, sixteen in the final session last year.
Always last year.
And we still could not get everybody into after the fifteen hundred. It's still a capacity issue, but you've addressed the deck and you've addressed what you can.
And we're not sure how much of that. Capacit, which we won't know, but if we only have twenty-four coming to state. We were bringing forty and like we said, we were only, we were cutting from forty to sixteen by the nighttime. How many of those that didn't make the finals caused more capacity issues at the front?
We just won't know.
If we're not bringing forty to Lexington, and we're only bringing the twenty-four to Lexington, we might, we're only going from twenty-four to sixteen at night. You're not cutting such a big chunk off. But it all, honestly, it actually, there's more state qualifiers than the grand scheme of it. We actually bring forty-eight per event instead of forty. But it all, honestly, actually, there's more state qualifiers than the grand scheme of it. We actually bring forty-eight per event instead of forty.
Questions? For either one?
Exactly. I'm assuming the supplies and diving as well.
Well, diving, yeah, I mean, as far as, I, I, it won't need an intermediate meet, like a skate first round diving, it won't need that.
Yeah.
But it's still qualified.
You're still going to have to find a way to cut to twenty-four. And therefore there may need to be some fine tuning once we see diving numbers, diving numbers are good. Diving numbers are diving. It really is.
To be honest, last year when we brought forty, we only cut two kids off. We, and the other one, I don't think you even had forty. They might have thirty-nine.
It was right before.
So like, we're right at eighty, eighty-five divers statewide anyways, like.
Yeah, I know, you know, and swim, the time's the time. And diving, all of a sudden now you've got judges involved, then it's judges at one location or judging the same way as judges at other locations, and then when at-large comes in.
Well, fewer, the fewer sites you can have, the less the impact of that. I mean, because there's, if you've got a few sites and particularly if you can kind of concentrate it, the same judges are doing it, you might argue with them, but at least it's the same set of judges.
At least one year, last year, maybe two, we've done, I know last year for certain, and this year is held the same way. Both diving regions were back-to-back days at Louisville, U of L, and they used the same panel.
Exactly. That would be our goal.
So that those at-larges aren't quite as controversial as you think.
So I'm just making sure, because I really need to study up on this, because I'm going to get asked. Um, there's not three rounds of diving? There would, would there be a semi-state?
I wouldn't see why you'd need.
Semi-state and then the final?
You wouldn't need the intermediate.
I wouldn't see why you'd need the intermediate.
I haven't made very well not need to change at all.
Exactly. Uh, this option in the state first round, wouldn't have a team champion. So the diving scores wouldn't be needed. We wouldn't, we wouldn't crown a state champion till the final round, which those diving scores would count in.
That would be something you would hear from the guy that wears the horns. Yeah, he would ask that. And it's a good question, really. You got a great guy.
Can I should keep you? Did we get feedback from swimmer coaching, or is this going to drop a bomb on them that we're going to have to answer for, is this?
The only, the only controversial thing that I heard, but the entire closet, this is what's already been discussed, so most people are already at the speed. That being the three coming out of the first round. Yeah, I'm not attending the first round, though the two coming out of the first round into the twenty-four, right on.
That's going to be their discussion point.
That will be the only.
But consistent.
Thing you're going to see somebody come up and put down the regular thing about now, and say this. I'm assuming, sir, correct me if I'm wrong, we are assuming a prelim, final, and legend, correct? Twenty-four, three, and start gaining in the finals, right? That is, that was one of the real strong points that I was getting a lot of feedback from, that we need to have, from one point and one point only competition.
Yeah, put it, we start final.
The, but the basic, big feedback was like, are you only bringing sixteen to like?
It was sixteen versus twenty-four, that's where the.
Are you cutting from forty to sixteen? Like, they were all panicked that we weren't going to, we were just going to come running time.
Come to the twenty-four, let's just keep the same schedule, let's, the, the, it's going to weed out some people that probably should be, there may be an occasional one left out, but it's, it's probably the only middle ground guy.
Yeah, the only other, the only other option is to say the twenty-four in the election, and five place on time, holding them out.
Right.
Putting other ones, that may be more palatable, but again, for his, once across, that was the cross state competition. And that's why we have those automatics, and that's the same thing with.
And that's why we, we very quickly dismissed that thought, because you all have wanted statewide representation, even if they're the slowest person in a track or swim pool, you want somebody. And so it, it is, and plus, she used the word. Um, I don't think you can mention enough in this room that we're not about the elite championship. We're about trying to get here step by step.
In your past experience with two qualifying out of the region and slay, because most of the qualifiers, you skip a real confidence, that option hitting versus I keep one, where we take them in the competition, and then, then you're taking them maybe. That's what I first related it to when I saw it, that you're going to talk, take those off two for region site, and then the next, uh, maybe take fifteen.
Here, here's where.
That option too, yeah, yeah.
In my comparison with track, when you're running a time final at track, i- it's different than when you do a prelim and final at a state final round. The kids that are supposed to be in the finals are in the, you know, at track, a kid in the third heat conflicts. That's not the case in swimming. You've got to advance to the final that night in order to play by rule. So it's, it's, I know I'm such a track mind and any of these swimming people I've been working with, I kind of do a lot of that. So option two looks the most like track, I would say, as far as like top two, top two. But I think the option from top three came when we had three sites. It felt like, to give you the option of, do we want to try to get, not that we will automatically get one from each region, but it could.
But your recognition dropping, but.
Yes.
Any more discussion? Those of you who don't have swimming, have no idea what's going on, pile on you guys that have it, so. Here are no more, we'll move ahead and forward.
In the never-ending saga of one of Joe's sports, um, item five, four, one. Um, we did at you, at your approval, by request, we did a survey of how many classes our schools wanted in female wrestling. And as is the norm, they were just about fifty-fifty. But more wanted twelve than wanted any other number. And that left us with a dilemma. Because then we asked them, okay, if you only want twelve, which set of weight classes do you want? And they chose the boys. By a wider margin than they chose twelve versus fourteen. And the big issue on the boys' classes was, we have some, we have some past participants in wrestling, it was real side, that exceed the weight limit of the girls' new weight classes. Trying to be as tactile as I can. In a document that the public can't see because it contains protected data, but you all have, you can see that we were generally talking about seventeen, fifteen kids last year who wrestled in the two hundred, what was the two hundred and eighty-five pound class. Before you take a whole bunch of objections from the Coach Association, I want to remind you. The Coaches Association was responsible for the tournament up until last year for girls, and had a chance to fix this problem. Because they knew that, they knew what was coming, Federation rule, and they declined. So those same people now don't want the two hundred and eighty-five pound class, that wanted it last year when they were off. So it's a little bit of a challenge. But that handout, because Joe did a great job gathering data and we presented it to you in a way that shows you, there's really, I think, only one kid that, there's, there's not many that haven't a real problem. They're going to have to, they're going to have to get on a weight management force, they're going to keep going. I think there's only one underclass. So if we can, what we started talking about, and Joe kind of brainstormed this for a month, we went back and forth on it, was could we do some hybrid? Our problem is, and as I always consider this when it relates to our insurance, we need to go by Federation rules, because that's what our bylaw says. And the Federation rules did not allow a two hundred and anything above two hundred and thirty-five for females. But the Federation also allows for states to experiment. So what we did, rather than take verbatim what the schools voted, which is do the boys' classes, we decided that we would request an experiment, which they have approved, that would let us use the twelve girls' weight classes and an experimental class above that to get, to get most of these girls who are seniors finished with the rest of the experience. There's zero data if there's any safety issue. Because frankly, a lot of these girls have been wrestling with boys at those heavier weights. But we were concerned, um, potential litigation, all kinds of other things, um, about just blindly saying, cut it off. The other thing that, that Joe pointed out often is that going with the Federation twelve girls plus the experimental weight lets us drop the smallest weight class from a hundred and seven to a hundred, which the coaches wanted, almost across the board. They wanted, they didn't want that smallest weight class to be a hundred and seven. For those of you as old as Tingley and I, it's back to the days when wrestling had a ninety-eight pound class and they eliminated it, went to a hundred and two, and the kids that were in there between there raised holy hell. So we've got, we've kind of threaded the needle a little bit on, on something that the, the kid, the coaches in school, the ADs, get what they wanted, and the girls still can wrestle big this year. And our, I think our idea is you monitor the weights. We may find that after this year, there's only two or three kids left, so he's, I'm sorry, kids, you know, either wrestle with the boys or do something about your health, but here's the limit. But at least they'd have a year's notice. We don't have to make that decision today. So this request is just for this year. Joe, I know you've been involved in gathering stuff all around it, so.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think you pointed out that the big thing, unfortunately, the way that designated Rex voted, the classes they chose, but the lowest girls' weight above the lowest girls'. Obviously, it's, you know, it's safe to say those girls are smaller and wear less than boys. So you know, it's ninety-pound girls, if you're guessing, it's one of these. So that was the safety concern. So this addresses that, allows those smaller girls to compete with a safe weight. Hopefully this is a compromise and sort of position.
Now, we'd be remiss, we do have a superintendent, a single superintendent, who's from a district about forty minutes from here, who has a huge girls' program. And he'd rather have fourteen play. But that's not like a low grade, uh, he, because he feels like he's going, he's got kids may not participate. But now he's going to have thirteen, so he admitted, it's a little bit kind of a good compromise. And he came from Johnson Central and now is at Harrison, so he's familiar with wrestling, he's been around wrestling his whole career. And so, uh, I, I get his concerns. Um, the other thing that, that as we watch this row, uh, it allows us to do is kind of see at twelve weight classes, at those twelve, how many forfeits do you get? So that's been a concern of the National Rules Committee. Is, is the forfeit, would you agree? Yeah, I mean, because that's why they keep changing the limits. So what we're recommending is you adopt a, adopt or accept this report and utilize the existing twelve females plus the two eighty-five class for the experiment track data and see if we didn't. Yeah.
Keeps the, keeps the ball out.
Exactly.
Any discussion? Move that out and forward.
I think the other item, uh, this told on is just about schedule, and this is more informational, but we, we will, we will not be able, given our participation numbers have eight, eight wrestling regions for females, which is not, they're not there. Um, uh, but we, what we need is some permission from you all. We have a little bit of chicken and egg thing going right now. Until you take action on five, four, one, schools can't enter their wrestlers, in track wrestling, and can't enter the weight testing, so we really don't know what numbers we have till we can open it up for them to enter. So we've kind of been, had to do one before the other. And what we'd like to do is have you authorize us to look at either a two-region, uh, two-regions per region or four, uh, set up for competition. We're really going to have four sites or two for the qualifying round for girls. And, uh, the numbers right now would probably support doing a two, but we'd, we'd like to get it to four. Joe thinks the data from the schools you talked to will lead us to, there's more than we've got, Joe.
Yeah, I think we talked about this a little bit, a couple of our sports. I just think there's confusion about how they need to enter these, these multiple gender sports in our system now. Schools don't realize if they have any girl that wants to enter postseason, they need to offer girls wrestling, even if it's just one kid.
Right.
So we're going to try and get that cleared out and go back any maybe.
Yeah, but his intuition is that we're going to be able to support four sites. We'll manage those like we've done this year. We'll take in, we'll sell the tickets and then we'll turn around and give them the money after we buy trophies, pay officials, but we, you know, we, we can kind of monitor this year and see if that does. We're just, we're dealing with an unknown. But what we would want to do is try to, try to develop that, and that would need to be done before you all get together again. So we need to really hit this data hard, and so we're asking for authorization to do that. So that would be the motion.
You have comments, sir? And then we'll move forward. Archery?
Next to last, brother.
You got to drag it down.
I know. You, you, you don't say it down. Archery, we do not have a state site confirmed. We have two sites held. I wanted to bring that to you. When we have competition for sites, we think we ought to bring it to you. Um, we have signed a long-term partnership with, uh, Lexington, the Central Bank Center and Rep Arena, to try to use their building. We use it for hype conferences, we use it for annual meetings, we use it for both basketball tournaments. We want to try to use it whenever we can, the Hall of Fame banquet. Because then maybe if there's certain sporting events not doing as well as they'd like, they're forgiving because we're also going to use them other times of year. We kind of breaks the tie here. Uh, we've had the, uh, it's turned to staff thoughts. We talked about it again the other day. We've got an opportunity to take the archery tournament to the Central Bank Center. If you're familiar with the, the center coming off High Street, it's the large part on the left, where rep is on the right, as you walk down High Street. Um, it's fifteen thousand square feet bigger. We think we eventually could even have a bigger archery tournament if we wanted to. We could perhaps do our existing archery tournament in less time, if we got more room, and that way schools aren't obligated to stay overnight. We just think we ought to give it a try. Uh, we've got Ephraim White here, and I tell you what, they have been over backwards to be good to us uh, over the years, hosting the tournament at, down in Bowling Green, near Born East. Sometimes they have trouble getting volunteers, sometimes they don't, but they've been really good. But we just think it's time to see if this event can grow. The request is that you authorize, uh, authorize us to enter an agreement with Central Bank Center for two years, and let's see how it goes.
You Thomas, sir?
Anybody chat there? Anybody say archery, boy? I mean, they would.
No, I think, I think, uh, um, you know, there, there is people, there are people that are looking at the, the Lexington Center and are considering using that for archery. So we're out ahead of the curve. I know NAST has looked at that. Uh, it's a great facility. Uh, it'll definitely be something that we could, uh, really look at the event and figure out, you know, how it could grow, how, how we can make it bigger, how we could maybe have more archers at the same time. There's lots of possibilities. Uh, you know, as the backup this year, Darren will be kind of, uh, leading, uh, the charge here and, uh, but we'll be working together, but I think this is a good thing. I, I echo the sentiments of Commissioner Tack that Ephraim White and the folks there in Bowling Green have done a great job. Uh, they've been wonderful to work with. Uh, this is just maybe, uh, a, a way for us to continue to elevate the event and take it to the next level.
So that would be recommendations forward then? Unless anybody has, has anything to add.
Here now, move that out and forward.
Um, a simple summary of item five point six point one, I think, uh, Mr. Thompson's already agreed to move, and if somebody else is going to have a second, I think they've already lined up, who's going to, uh, make the move to accept the results of the referendum on bylaw nine, which were a hundred and thirty-one in favor and thirty-seven opposed to, uh, removing the preseason restrictions on basketball. I will tell you, soon as you adopt this and we start it through, you're going to get a proposal to, uh, consider adding restrictions in the other team sports during their season. That's, we told you all that was going to happen. We talked about the annual meeting. That basically we don't play on the outside team during their high school season, so I don't know how you all feel about that, and how the delegates will feel about it. That would require school vote, but I can tell you, it's coming. They're glad we took the preseason way to basketball. Now, we have gotten a couple of comments. One of Dave's constituents, um, who is a, a very good writer, um, pinned a couple of pages long on all the problems he'll create, but he had a vote like everybody else. Didn't get, didn't, maybe didn't vote, they didn't go the way he thought it. But what we need from you all is approval to take this to stake board and start the thing. I know who's, I know who's going to make the motion. I was just waiting for the second.
Yeah.
Angela's not here to crowd you out.
Yeah. Most discussion, move that out and forward. Six?
Uh, when we get there. So you are done with items. Now, we, we have a change in plans, and I think we're ready. Um, that we have a fellow that's been here all morning cooking for you all. He's served lunch before, so, and it is grill type stuff, and he's pretty damn good at it. Um, Mr. President. Here at this committee, you want to go ahead and break for the school day length of brunch and their breakfast and then come back to the full meeting?
I think that's, I think that's appropriate. We, we just need to set us a time, we need to be.
I was going to say, twenty-two to twenty-five.
Twelve oh five, uh, twelve forty-five, give everybody plenty of time to get through the line and eat and get back and call our meeting order at twelve forty-five.
You've already heard him hollering bam back.
Twelve forty-five.
And he found out the carpet's getting replaced, so he's not going to worry about making a mess.